And the whole move to pro-choice masking policy. Together, the aforementioned district had around nineteen buildings. Only one school closed in the past month and switched to virtual learning. Not an entire district, but one school within the district. If other districts in our immediate area have figured out how to stay open and mask, it's time we step up to the plate, too. It's not twenty twenty anymore. We've come far, and the time is now to adopt a pro-choice masking policy. We're not advocating for anyone to stop masking if they don't want to. We are advocating that the board would consider all families in the district. We believe that being pro-choice and masking is the middle ground. This way, no one's being forced to do something they don't feel is best for their plan. Everyone can think for themselves. We live and work in well-educated communities who need to be protected. As the pandemic has quickly changed into an epidemic, so must our policies. We believe we should adopt the language due to privacy of the CDC and only recommend masking. We are asking for a pro-choice masking policy to be adopted and put in place immediately. Sincerely, thirty-nine Kelly Elementary faculty and staff members.
Yep. All right. Next comment comes from Tara Michaels. She is writing to ask you to update the health and safety plan to reflect guidance provided by the CDC and recommend, rather than mandate masking in school like the vast majority of schools are doing. Having a pro-choice policy seems like a great opportunity to meet in the middle, like someone mentioned at the last meeting. If you choose not to vote to recommend rather than mandating masking, can you please provide the healthcare professionals and/or data to support your decision? Thank you.
Evening. Parent Shae, one nine three, Malcolm, through at the research. Thanks for having the health and safety plan on the agenda tonight. A lot of us all time speak. I'm the father of two students in fourth and second grades. I firmly believe that masking has been an effective tool during the pandemic. In August one twenty, I joined roughly one hundred and fifty other parents in asking networks or schools to try to endorse masking. This past August, I asked the board to adopt a sounder health and safety plan, given that ages five through eleven were still on the way to access vaccines. At different stages of the pandemic, I agree with you, school should implement the appropriate measures. Tonight, I ask you to consider an alternative health and safety plan where you move from mask universally required to mask recommended before the other four months. In other words, please make masking optional well ahead of the March twenty eighth date. Social distancing would have to be optional in all places. My daughter wants that. I'd be able to use it in the next meeting. Hospitalization down, cases of all the sharply reducing rates for schoolchildren. Confirming this trend is regional data from five on another section of our food supply. Not only are cases down, hospitalizations down, but also now all K P twelve age students have had access to vaccines for healthy identities and diseases, even if they do not entirely prevent infection. We also know the effectiveness of well-being, high-quality day and ninety-five, and day of nine for masks. We need high-quality masks for those who achieve them, plus access to incredible vaccines. We have the tools to safely use the test to a mask-free pandemic policy. I'm not here to primarily advocate masking. My kids are doing fine. They don't behind the masks. They are clothed because they're more comfortable for them, even though we know they're less effective. Okay? When our kids come home and we ask, "Kai, how was your day?" They always say, "Good." Again, they're doing fine. But I know that just because our two are doing all right, not every kid is doing fine. I don't expect the eighth grade boy to be unaffected by voluntary masking just because my second grade daughter is. Other kids are struggling from the downsides of masking for this long. Some kids are hurting from the negative impacts of masking for two whole school years. I know this to be true because we came here two weeks ago and we told us. I believe them. I hope that you believe them and not only verbally acknowledge these struggles, but choose your power to do something about it. We have the tools to safely go mask off all day and thus serve the overall well-being of a much broader student staff community. Yes, there are kind of health and safety guidelines that have a section on social, emotional, and mental health, and clearly from what I heard from you two weeks ago, I think we should do more to serve the school community in this area. Moving to mask recommended via base steps in this direction. Doing so now will give them a full three months, not just two, to finish off this school year as some concluded from.
Okay. Our next comment is from Laura Graver. Imagine you are a shy second grader. You have a stutter that is exacerbated when you are nervous or frustrated. Perhaps English isn't the primary language spoken in your home. You are struggling with math and reading, but are too shy to raise your hand or speak up. You have been tossed around to different caregivers over the last two years because of contact tracing. Your brief experience in school has been disrupted several times and family stress has been high. Then you moved to Lewisburg. Would you be able to assimilate better, quicker, and more confidently with or without a mask at your new school? Should masking be your family's decision, understanding they know you best? How are your many needs being met as a member of our L A S D school system? While a single student with all of these difficult circumstances might be rare, each issue exists in our school district. And for each of these children, whether or not to wear a mask should be a decision made by their family and healthcare team, not this well-intentioned school board. The proposed health and safety policy mask mandate prioritizes the health of some, but leaves others behind. I sincerely acknowledge that a balance is appropriate and that there was a time when the risk from COVID was worth dampening the educational experience for our students with restrictive measures. Today, it is clear from our local COVID hospitalization and death rates, CDC mortality reports, peer-reviewed medical research, and common sense that the decision to mask should return to families. Please remove the mandate tonight. That's it.
Hello, good evening. My name is Zachary Engel. I want to take this time to thank each, every one of you for your hard work and dedication. Um, after speaking at the last meeting, we are still wearing masks. I stand by what I said at the last meeting. If you want to wear a mask, you can wear one. We should not think about the past. We should think about the future of our generation. If you are definitely afraid of a virus, then wear a mask. If you have a grandparent, a mom, or a dad that has a leak-and-gain system, then wear one. But I don't feel it's necessary to be forced to wear a mask in a school setting. We should not be using fear tactics to disguise our way around this virus. It's time to get back to normal. I have here today a petition I made three days prior to this meeting, and so far, I got one hundred and seventy-six signatures to make masking optional. It's time we thank and take action to stand up for the student body in the Lewisburg area school district. I will state what I previously said before. We wear a mask from seven thirty AM to two forty PM, and after school, COVID just goes away. Let's stop as what I see in my eyes as hypocrisy and take this time and thank you.
Okay. Our next comment comes from Dana Bernardo, who says, "I would love for the school district to consider making masks optional. I feel like it's time."
Good evening, everyone. I'm Erin DeSantis. I am a freshman here at high school, and I'm strongly in favor of teaching the current language and health and safety plan regarding mandatory masking here for the whole day. I've completed entirely my eighth grade year with this people program. And unlike that, in the building, I have a deeper appreciation of the value of being part of it. The fact that I'm able to make my peers, my teachers, my principal, all of that, not the new grade. So take this from a student. Masking does not cause a significant disruption. It presents a very minor inconvenience that is far outweighed by scientific evidence. The greatest distraction foreign occurs is we're distracted from class by unmasked or incorrectly matched. We're distracted by the danger that we're facing. And even further, the distraction can occur, which can result in horrible learning experiences or be isolated into a long month without that of it. Consider our community's current COVID crisis rates. It is not a safe time to lack for masking policies. The case numbers are decreasing. They are not at a level that warrants completely illegal masking policies. I ask the board, why take away the crucial health policy when it has proven to have a positive effect? The CDC and the American Academy of Health have supported universal masking in all major schools. If you take away our masking requirement, you will not be compliant with these professional directives. I fully understand the importance of first-hand decisions. But in the school setting, the decision to wear or not wear a mask is not just a choice. The actions we all take affect the safety of our peers, their families, and then all of whom is part of the community. We should not be compromising the health of the people involved in our A S D families just because some think masks are a cop to the world. The masking decision does not remain the same. It has the ability to negatively affect or even fail in effect so many matters. I understand there's no right answer in the issue of COVID prevention, but I urge the board to err on the side of caution. He asks around for the safety and security of our students as all the consideration arose that we have lost in the COVID pandemic. I believe the board, our teachers and principals, and our parents who all agree that keeping up students in the building is the best way for our community to learn. If that is to continue, it must be done, however. But to be responsible is a big, maybe, a little.
Our next online comment comes from Kimberly Drexler. "My name is Kimberly Drexler, and I have two children currently attending L A S D schools. I am writing to support a continuing mask requirement into schools until such time as the COVID threat level in Union County has fallen to low or moderate. I do not support the arbitrary end date in March as recently proposed, but that is far preferable to dropping the mask requirement now. I realize masking has, for some reason, become a point of political contention, which I think is shameful. We all need to step up, care about our neighbors, and do our best in service of public health. I believe at this time that charge includes requiring that students, faculty, staff, and visitors wear masks correctly when in our schools. I urge the board members to follow the science and stick close to their inner angels. You have my sincere gratitude for all of the work you do on behalf of our children." Thank you.
I'm Taylor. We currently see pretty soon online school or online seventh-year and think that while we're school, I very much remember whether I am online. If we get a line of students in the building, we'll have to call them down to school and let them go to the room if I did not go. And I don't think it's a thing. Masking as a global community, I didn't send the professionals and that's the moment because you can't just direct those recipients in. The ITU has like seven months, and then obviously there's no room left in one year. And if you're new to the mask, or way more effective in the pandemic, there's almost anything else. You haven't been immune to COVID without masks. I'm way more likely than without than with masks. Because masks protect you from the virus. And without masks, people can get exposed to virus and really go to school that have stable members and present that are using virtual learning have lower risk, brace it with online learning, and it's not as effective as being in person.
Our next online comment comes from Chris DeSantis. "Regarding the health and safety plan, I encourage the board to maintain the current plan for masking as written until either the stated deadline arrives or community spread drops low enough to meet the criteria outline. L A S D has done a great job this year keeping schools open, and although cases are dropping, the CDC still lists Union County as high spread. Being tired of masks is not enough reason to change course now. Personal choice is a hard argument to accept when personal choices can quickly affect the whole community. Our responsibility should be to err on the side of caution for as long as it makes sense."
Hello, my name is James Cummings. I'm a senior student for area high school and advocate for this department. Before I begin, I would like to clarify, thank you to you for the last week. I'm very honored that I can speak. Quote Martin Luther King Jr., intelligence plus care, that is the goal of true education. Due to the tireless efforts of our teachers and staff, this person is a common wonder that's for intelligence. I feel very blessed to be here. However, the current masking policy of the school is stagnating. Here I say the strict date, the character development. Like everyone, we're going to start. Because of my shows and hearing abilities, I have struggled with understanding groups around especially in these situations. It's mainly more self-conscious and restricted when talking, causing me to lose friends. Me and my peers aren't the only ones affected, but if you walk into hallway classrooms, you'll find that the gazing is shut down. The prolonged isolation of COVID cases left many feelings of insecurity down, which can't be resolved while it's in high behind her face companies. I interact with friends and family outside of Lewisburg, and they tell me of normal days. Smiles and apologies. I'm just very frustrated that I don't know what to say this time. Lewisburg is multiple places in the district that has not moved away mandated masking. There is certainly a period of time. Even Sun Tech, which Howard is sort of a jump in my super class, does not mandate wearing masks. Two years into this pandemic, all students have either had COVID and been vaccinated. What started off as a preventative measure is no longer needed as a necessity. I'm confident that this COVID crescendo is beginning. Sometimes we'll never know the value of them or compliment.
All right. Our next comment comes from Bradley Brochus. "As a medical professional working in emergency medicine, I support the proposed ending of mask mandatory masking for school-aged children. According to the most recent PA Department of Health website this afternoon, the current vaccination rate for individuals five and older in Union County is sixty-six point nine percent first dose and fifty-nine point four percent fully vaccinated. The positivity rate in the last seven days is under eleven percent and has been dropping precipitously. The number of tests performed over the last seven days has dropped by thirty-seven, thirty-five percent, and the number of new cases in the last days is only eighty-seven for the entire county. We have reached a time where we need to treat this pandemic as an endemic and remove the mandatory masking for children. I support masks continuing to be optional for those individuals or children most at risk or with greatest concern. This transition is possible because of a number of factors, including our county's high vaccination rates, the increasing availability and use of rapid tests to detect infection, and decreasing hospitalization rates."
Hello, everyone. My name is Nora DeSantis, and I'm a freshman at high school. I'm ready to support the board and say that it's important to mask. I understand that this is a desirable one. First of all, in regards to upcoming diseases, so we tend to guess a mask just like everyone around us, we need some mindsets. It's easy to compare it to them and not to the late day impact that they have on our safety of the community. But it's not, I'd love to be a victim to produce the effects and burden when they are so driven to keep transmissions down and control the spread of the virus. I know for certain that any of my friends and peers still hope to have data, knowing that they end up vaccinated or not, not necessarily. And I, especially, who has been in years of past mothers, greatly appreciate it. As someone who already did a year of unmasked school, I do not want my students to have fears. Lewisburg has been a major city since the entire year, and what touches the heart, especially now, is regarding to mask. People may need to avoid it or even unmask. And I definitely cannot learn a little bit how much they may now look dangerous. I ask that we keep the mask, not because I only worry about my health and my family, rather than the concerns that everyone else here has, but because the people everyone's trying to start community as a whole and fully wants to be, that it's unique to be a threat. If you are advocating for the mask no longer being mandatory, then you must accept that you may be featured for the remainder of this year and the learning loss of students of all ages at the resource. Now, to identify strange cases, there may even be a difference in someone's life and death because going through that children are not as conscious and strongly by the retires on access. There are outliers and incentives that it can be faced. The fact that the vaccine should not completely help start the virus is an even more sure reason that we need to stick with what we've always been able to rely on, which is the mask. Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Christine Malloy. "Good evening, board members and those attending tonight's meeting. I'm a parent and a healthcare worker who is asking that the school board revisit their masking mandate. I am in support of a reduction in this mandate down to a mask optional recommendation so children can get back to a normal learning environment. The most recent data, according to the Pennsylvania Department of Health, is that there were less than five cases in children under four years old and only five cases in fifteen to eighteen-year-olds in our county that is tabulated weekly. Hospitalizations are down as well, so I feel this is the opportune time to allow our children the opportunity to learn unencumbered by masks. I don't deny anyone the choice of wearing a mask, but I ask that the mandate be lifted as the data is clear that they are no longer needed in our schools."
Well, my name is Sarah. I'm an undergraduate at U of U. It is my opinion that masks are a habit that my students use. I know I seem unjust to myself, but I also believe in my class. And I say that I feel genuinely safer at school, so required. The CDC still recommends under masking that teenagers and staff have a selection of statistics in all eight major schools. But the CDC is not involved. I see no reason to linger on the fact. Although the rate of transmission is one point back, it is so high in Union County's population. Therefore, I see no reason to make huge for health reasons. I feel much safer if the mask will be a thing. As someone who's in East Coast from here, I know that there's a lot better than back to school. It's in the mask where we should get that it will be a thing.
It is seven thirty, so. Seven oh six, okay. All right. Our next comment comes from Karen Blakesley. "I want to first thank the board for ending contact tracing last meeting. Now on to masking. Let our teachers do what we have hired them to do and teach. Please leave the healthcare of our children to the parents. If you want to continue to mask, have at it. At this point, no one will care, but let those who know masks don't work just breathe. I know I probably got some eye rolls on that statement, but cloth and surgical masks don't work against COVID. In hospitals, you don't see anyone going in a room with just a surgical mask. They are wearing a medical-grade N ninety-five that has been professionally fitted for them. COVID cases and hospitalizations have been decreasing since January. We are the only local school district still masking. Our kids need to see their friends smile again and not just outside of school. Our teachers need to worry about teaching and not who has their mask on incorrectly. At this point, masking is harming our kids mentally. Out of all the age groups, kids are the lowest on the charts to die from COVID. Now, I don't want anyone to die, but COVID isn't the leading cause of death for children either. Car accidents, murder, and suicide are all higher. Please listen to the kids and let them smile again." Thank you.
To begin, I humbly say that our first experience with COVID was a level. Of use of masks and other stuff, we thought maybe we didn't have to work in our department or know before. The minor degrees of mask play quite a part in not being able to carry the special classes up to the strong class at the usual. Especially when CDC seriously recommends masking at school, safety is often held within the community, must be prioritized, or much less in this year, all that, which everyone on this campus is committed to accomplish. There's a more eliminating mask for any student, including myself, for many students, including myself. There's also the major shows anxiety. The majority of standard-based masks mainly serve a purpose of shielding others and won't potentially affect the saliva particles. So naturally, being engulfed in the mask of unmasked, here, can be extremely distressing. At the beginning of the school year, masking with a monitor is what can happen to students. I could have made an announcement that only about one-third of the school population are being masked, and administration should have noted the collective proof of vaccination status. Situation evolved to the point where the underwritten ones on masks will ultimately genuinely consider to be masked online learning, despite the trouble with education. Don't change this school to share with others, because here I have never before associated my education. Pretending for a voluntary mask mandate not only ensures that all students can restrict the possibility for students to endure discomfort here in an atmosphere intended for a restless, secure. Lastly, evolving on the mask mandate not only impacts the learning environment to my core of the entire. It also remains to observe for the back when there's something that may exist under permanent by the administration. It's not driving valid measure of, except by removal of masks. However, in the event of the administration does gather participants to the parent's or sufficient majority of the school population acquired vaccine, perhaps some duration would allow students to release, would allow schools to release masks. But till then, the only appropriate do for allowing students and regulations to respect masks.
We have reached the end of the allowed thirty minutes for public comment, but I will enter motion to extend the public comment period. By Dr. DeWalt, consented by Ms. Stanton, will extend for thirty minutes. Yeah, I'm saying thirty minutes. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
I also completed some text in my announcement that Mr. Keith and Dr. Unskrufisero are with as well. All right, I apologize for not chiming in a favor.
Okay.
Sure. Sorry. Okay.
Yes. Our next online comment comes from Caitlin Chen. "I support the continuing of the masking and social distancing policies. I feel that it is unfair to people with pre-existing conditions and those with vulnerable family members to get rid of the mandate, especially since school is a place where viruses are extremely easy to spread."
And you're currently a teacher student at Union County. Do you have any thinking schools would recommend these health and safety policies? Much in terms of state, and are both in favor of keeping this on that model of policy across four years, that really can be built? Rather than the vaccination study, wearing masks of a greater part in our community of escape is not a duty that can be lit up. It should not be read and lit up this vaccine at all. We are supposed to be thankful, and we have thirty minutes, are you in there? The mask calls out the fact. And in fact, it is actually to treat more of the fact, because the mask also provides our last tribute of the dust and pollen in the air. Wearing masks not in my absence. And while wearing masks may be a positive review, but for me, it brings me a sense of security that I'm doing what I can to check myself, my community, my friends, and most importantly, my guests. In E L A, we are currently learning about something that many Holocaust survivors felt if their days survive, while so many of their friends, family, their community did not survive since. Many people, both in the Holocaust, but in so many other like that situation with COVID, could have done what they, one kind of thing, days alive for those that they have lost. If I made the decision not to wear masks in a school environment, one kind of something that protects so many people, I personally would have to know that down the line, eventually, I just wouldn't have worn masks. It'd be the reason somebody else is close to that, not on your, that the COVID, or certainly the way if I'd have done it on someone else, you know, if I knew that I had COVID, still decided to not wear a mask, there's no question that I would feel when I was trying not saying this. Some people may argue that wearing masks, that is violating the constitutional rights as given by the First Amendment, freedom of speech and expression. But wearing a mask does not disturb our freedom. Instead, it helps us to maintain our. By wearing a mask, we make every interaction safer for every person in our community. You gain the freedom to go to school, to work, have social life. By wearing a mask, you must afford the freedom that we would date, you have the tolerance, integrity, and.
Our next comment comes from Katie Gill. "I would like to thank all the parents and students who have taken the time to speak at the last two meetings in favor of optional masking. The factual scientific evidence is overwhelming that cloth and paper masks are ineffective and can actually be detrimental. Even the KN ninety-five mask has to be properly fitted and aerosol tested to be of any use against viral infections. However, if your feelings are that the mask offers you some level of protection against any virus, I fully support your right and choice to wear one, as it is my right and my choice for me and my family to not wear one. We are all blessed to be living in the United States of America, the land of the free, where freedom of choice exists. Our students have been masked in school for almost two entire school years. It is beyond time to give them and their families a choice."
Hello, my name is Karen Ellis and I'm six fifths senior general of the local. I'm here today to discuss the current LAAS school policy. First, I would like to thank LAAS school, even when we try not to speak about my father. And how it master every day. Think one I would like to address probably makes me stop masking. We like to use a very generous of how. School wanted to bet this. I believe this is a major problem because in the blood sub change, things were very active, that's why we talked. We hardened up the bracket. You know, the way I can wear a mask of purpose at the top, this can make it much harder. This can even go as far as being a housewife, choosing a third, fourth, fifth, even industry. In fact, we can, we can, we can, we can basic one of those things. Running for jobs, but it's something that. Which I forgot my normal, but I thought I'd do this one up much harder while having the face covered. I understand. I was starting to look at says, and I was almost definitely going to be with us. I'm down. We just finished here and all of them, we hang over the. Doesn't feel so bad. And you guys standing there about two minutes later, he told me through a lot of talks. It was very active and this never happened before, so I thought it would be probably the fact that a mask on my home. So I actually let it go, and about when we stayed there when I was first going to the center. Was there a gym that was going to pass out? And as well, we spoke. And recently, only about five to get casey while we were in the soccer. We are in the middle of a drill with a little roll along the side. Starting with that game, it's not, you know, my house, I saw that at this game, so. But I knew if I lowered my mask to catch my breath, I would get in trouble. A while ago, I actually have a photo of it, but now it's. It was getting quicker than we were supposed to speak, but. Um, and boss, and if I were to go, I would say, that should be my.
Okay, our next online comment comes from Robert Gutierrez. Hello, I'm sorry I can't be present to share these comments in person, but I appreciate the board allowing time and recommendations for this. I would like to kindly ask that the board please review the slides that Joe Graham emailed to you as they cite a number of relevant studies and findings from the medical and scientific community in support of mask use. For reducing the chance of transmission and infection. I thank the board for their ongoing commitment to the health and safety of teachers, staff and students in our schools through its health and safety plan. I support our board and our school's continued adherence to guidance from the CDC. And I am in favor of effective measures that reduce airborne transmission of the virus like the required use of masks and room ventilation and filtration. These continued small mitigation steps will continue to play an outsized role in protecting the most vulnerable and immunocompromised community members in our schools, along with our hospitals and healthcare workers in the region whom we all depend on. With thanks for all your continued hard work and dedication to this issue, Robert Gutierrez, parent of three kiddos in the Lewisburg schools.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board and administration for allowing students to come to school. My name is Haley Burkey. I'm a senior here at Lewisburg Area High School. I'm here also in support of making masks optional. Last meeting, I spoke of the physical strain that masks can on one's voice, as well as the negative effects on self-esteem that masks. Mask masks can have on acting. But after hearing the discussion between the board members about about the topic of masking. I decided to come to school for a different. A word that I continue to hear during these meetings is which is uncompromised. And I absolutely agree. Me as a school, as a board and as a community, we need a compromise. But I feel even proposing a compromise all along, a compromise is close. Maybe parents are close to people and desperate, they're angry with every situation we live in. We're not mandating that someone who feels more comfortable with a mask or who has a family member or they themselves need a mask to not wear them. Just as we feel that for those who don't need these things or don't feel as comfortable or feel that they're being treated because of masks, be forced to wear them. We wouldn't mandate every student to attend a conference because some students struggle, struggle with emotional health. It is something that's provided, it is something that's encouraged. But it's only for, and it's there for those who need it, not enforced on everyone who don't. Allowing the need. Allowing students to have the choice to wear a mask or not. Gives these students who need to wear a mask the ability to wear the mask. And to those who don't need to, to not. I understand that some families have health concerns of relatives, close family members in mind. And those students should have the choice to stay with proper precautions and keep their family member or loved ones safe. But we at the school body are carrying so much stress already between. Part-time jobs, participating and practicing for extracurricular activities, outside community students, college scholarships, all the while. Uh, and people are great though. It shouldn't be every student's job to carry the heavy responsibility of the entire community. I'm begging you as a community member, as a school who is directly affected by the decisions we make on board. Let's make masking optional for all students today. Let mothers and fathers do what they are meant to do as parents to make the decision that we best prepare for.
Our next comment comes from Jeff Schechter. He writes, I want to thank the board members for their continued support of the health and safety of our students and community. I urge all members of the board to continue to support the current masking policy in all of our schools. While COVID nineteen infection rates are lessening, Union County remains in the highest infection category. Now is not the time to abandon our efforts at preventing spread of this disease among students, their families and other citizens at risk. I would ask that the board continue their masking policy for the near future, at least until our area achieves a more manageable classification of infection risk. This would benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jay Pass, student, athlete and person at Lewisburg Area High School. I'm here in support of removing, removing if you need for masking requirement. I would like to talk optional. And really, I don't have too much to say, except that. My reasons for wanting to remove are, and. I feel that it is a choice for each person to decide whether they want a mask or whether they don't need to have one. It is a very personal situation and a family should be able to have that choice once again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Dawn Warren. We have been e schooling our son last year and this year and had hoped to return him for his last marking period at Kelly. Respectfully asking for masking to continue to support those working in healthcare striving to save lives.
Um, I'll say again that there are some spaces in front of any of the full chairs.
My name is Mark Mark Wixey and I'm on your list here at Lewisburg. Oh, very high school student. I'm here to ask the board immediately. I'm going to tell you the follow up. Like to talk about the pandemic, but those students are basically. And it's not covered. And then if our students are facing it, that's all. Unfortunately, over the last two years, each year, four of that for four hundred and fifty students, school age students, rather than United States, lost their lives. COVID, that's tragic, one of those lives was precious. But it may surprise most of you for me to tell you the number of suicides committed, high school age students, part of COVID. CDC estimates it was four thousand five hundred students per year. The tragedy is that one would skyrocket since COVID. American Academy of Pediatrics says that eighty-six percent decreased suicide deaths in the last two years. Does the father of a son who attempted suicide in your city today? Begin to focus on real pandemic that our students face and it's not about, it's not covered.
Our next online comment comes from Jove Graham. Thank you for, thank you all for your efforts to keep our community safe. I have submitted an email to you all with a brief PowerPoint summary of the multiple nationwide and state-based studies that support universal masking in schools. This presentation also addresses many inaccurate statements that were made at the last board meeting. I urge the district to continue the practice of indoor universal masking during the school day until the community transmission level has dropped below substantial. Thank you again.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Tasha Zersham. She'll put in the district and women's. I would like to offer an example of a compromised approach to masking as done in a neighboring school district. Warrior Run School District recently eliminated contact tracing. Then on February seventeenth, we asked a call show. I had the privilege of personally speaking with a board run school board member to gain insight into the health and safety plan. And to inquire about vice mayor's role and position. Making, as we noted, that vice mayor had a partnership with border line and was involved in the review of the plan. Warrior Run has a health and safety review team which compromise the principals, school nurses, superintendent, supervisor, building and grounds, athletic director, as well as personnel. Um, they do wellness and other health initiatives. And this is moving on the rest of the team. And the school board member also enjoys getting input from a pediatric RN and a doctor team of vice mayor. Like us, they comply with COVID recommendations from vice mayor. Their recent proposal to the board to make masks optional was a collaborative effort of reducing the viral feedback. From everybody's school, clinical boards, nurses, as well as the vice mayor's support personnel. Because case counts were down in the school community, they felt they could make decisions to make masks optional. Like our board, they were also divided, but this board member here that has reviewed the new by decision, this is for mask optional. And the majority of the board supported the effort and said it was eight to one vote. I bring this up because board members comply that they will only do what local health experts recommend. I've worked for vice mayor more than twenty years. I have valued their contribution to health in our community. I appreciate their support through the pandemic. And let's talk, and I do really love my job there. Um, I would urge you to consider though, that they're not school administrators, they're not experts in education, classroom management, et cetera. School decisions should consider the of the people, taxpayers, parents, children and school staff. Church counselors, et cetera. Warrior Run addressed that representation from many groups leading to a collective balanced decision that seems to really benefit their whole district. I would add that this board member was an advocate for universal masking and so agreed to vote. She also added that her daughter would like it, continue to wear her mask, but agreed that parents and kids should be able to choose. Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Megan Nair. I have lost two very close members to COVID in the past eighteen months. I strongly believe in the ability of vaccines to not only reduce your likelihood of getting some strains of COVID, but they clearly reduce your likelihood to end up in the hospital or dying, and this is crucial. As someone who has lost a brother-in-law and a father-in-law, not to mention friends, having said this, waiting to make masks optional until after vaccines are available for the under fives is paramount. I understand all the arguments for getting rid of mask mandates, and I agree with nearly all of them. But I have children who aren't even eligible to get a vaccine and choosing to get rid of masks right now tells me that my family and young child do not matter. It says the young kids in the Kelly pre-K don't matter. So please, please wait until the under fives can be protected just as much as the rest of us. Then by all means ditch the masks, pile them up and have a bonfire. I will be among the first to join.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie House and I'm a eighth grader student at the local. I'm asking that you go for masking for law school. I believe that wearing masks should be a first of all. The paper in law court is that most people who wear are proven to be believed to be infected. According to the CDC, we have been living under a harsh set of safety wearing masks. I keep seeing wearing your mask below their nose every day, so what if I'm wearing them? In this school, it is hard to hear my people with masks on and it affects friends. There's also part of connection with my peers when I can't see the face of the person. It's not with me. This affects many things, mental health and makes them build a standard for their classes. It is a dividing issue amongst students as well. Being taught to respect the diversity of others, yet when it comes to masking exactly, seems to be similar for everyone. I am here with my friends in school with masks on, but as soon as school's over, we are together with no mask. At sport practices, games and other exercises, we are expected. You only require wear a mask. People could wear them a day two a week though. We should not have different rules for during school and after. All of my surrounding students have made masking optional as well. As many schools as. And well, as many schools in much more populated areas. So why are we still forced with masks? I have friends who go to other schools and they have not had any more provisions than artists. If people feel like getting a vaccine, wearing a mask protects them, then they can do those things themselves. So it should not be for them, everyone. We should have the freedom of choice.
Our next online comment comes from Kevin Jamison. Dear school board members, as we look at all sides of the ongoing mask debate, I guess my only question is, are we using any common sense? We mandate masking, yet we don't seem to mind not having enough custodians to thoroughly clean our school buildings. We worry about masking, yet any student, teacher or community member can enter our schools mask free once the student day is over. Even my fifth grader realizes how little common sense we have when she says we have banned in the cafeteria. Not three feet apart and we are all literally maskless and blowing air around, except for the percussion kids who still have to wear masks. I think a little common sense would go a long way. Please adopt the CDC wording to make the masking recommended, but not mandatory. Thank you.
My name is Anna Ryder. I'm a two son spirit. First, I want to say thank you for your care for our community and your willingness to allow significant action for public contracts. February tenth, we will end. This is greatly appreciated. I also appreciate the willingness, many of you have expressed and welcomed phone calls on your own time outside of these hours. Here tonight to express how strong is our view of the mask recommendation policy. Who we spoke, the six of you who voted no to the new mask recommended policy, even being able to see an offer somewhere in the distance. I strongly believe that offerings clearly staring us in the face. On our proverbial road trip, navigating COVID, you're hearing further off course each passive day when mask mandate remains effective. COVID hospitalizations are plummeting locally in interstate. According to today's daily, COVID hospitalizations in the state have increased by seventy-nine percent in the last six weeks. We are down to one thousand seven hundred and five hospitalized patients with COVID across the entire state. Locally, even COVID hospitalizations, about sixty-six percent passed this week. They currently report twelve COVID patients. And just today, even announced the permanent closing of our COVID testing facility. Very good sign. This is all fantastic news and we should all be greatly encouraged by. This news in these local schools don't constitute a two-year sign. Take the offer in now and ask what does or what will. Six of you have not yet clearly stated your personal plan this time, determining your offerings. We are now the only school, by knowledge, in Graceus grand house still requiring masks. That fact alone should make you ask questions for yourself. Is COVID a greater danger in Lewisburg than this and the rest of the sus grand valley? Any reasonable person would say no. What do we as a community and the school board know that every other school district and area is not? Outside of re-closing few local schools in January, like Oklahoma, so do you? These other districts' relaxed mask policies have not led to an increase in hospitalizations or deaths or school closures. While I appreciate that you are not responsible for the education, welfare of students in those other school districts. We don't have better information than they do, causing us to mandate mask wearing. And it just feels like either hubris on your part or irrational fear of the unmask. Are these other school districts, school boards and administrations less caring of their students, put students under their care? I highly doubt it. It feels like we are playing moral or intellectual superiority to arrive in a different conclusion based on the same fat effects and risk factors as these other local school districts. I'm also struggling to comprehend how you can sit through listening to the statements of several students two weeks ago. As well as local doctors and other community members and not be able to make decisions on masking. Students were some of Lewisburg's finest and represented a significant number of classes. Students all made strong coaching points about mental health disengagement, speech development for younger children, struggles of building relationships in a distant school. And it felt as if they were patted on the head in this space. I believe you owe those students transparency and a better explanation for why you keep voting maintain mandatory masking. The collective frustration of practically the person. Dr. Ballas submitted a plan calling for masking in late March. I don't believe there is any scientific or data driven, no reason to post to that date. A large contingent of the community agrees that it is now time to take that offering and. and to move to make a masking agreement. Do you owe this to students or teachers, our administration, that act now? Thank you for your time in this discussion.
Our next online comment comes from Mike Duran. End of March is too long to address the mask policy. We are at a low risk in the school and community. I have waited patiently for the opportunity to arrive in a safe manner. In no school scenario will Kelly Elementary be without a single sick student. The majority of the state is revamping. Why should we need to wait?
Hello, my name is Eliot Alver, and I'm a seventh-year student at Geisinger. As of January 13th this year, the CDC recommended that all schools must amend mask mandate, and this recommendation is not going to be implemented. This may affect the future of such recommendations and self-proven. Notice, the CDC has also published a report explicitly stating that areas containing schools without mask policy get a proximity three times more threatened virus cases on average than areas with mask policy. For these reasons and many others, I strongly believe that we continue with a mask policy for us, but still we have better to be safe. Sorry if people want to take that.
Our next comment online comes from Boyd and Jerry Lee Carney. Fatigue and frustration are setting in. It has been a long two years. School mask mandates are ending everywhere. We are the only school in the area to have a mask mandate. Yes, a couple of schools have gone remote, and many schools haven't. A lot of our own kids have gotten COVID while still wearing masks, or two masks, while being vaccinated. This variant, just like the previous variants, doesn't discriminate. Our kids have gone above and beyond to protect our community and each other. Please end the mask mandate and let our kids focus on their education and focus on being kids.
My name is Phil Duffield, and as you know, this school will not introduce to us. This may hinder a lot of us to stay in school, stay here. If we don't, if we don't keep masks, this is going to shut down this community, detriment of all of our students, but to the mental health. As we can tell from our experience, China has set almost faster to make the mental health of students to actually use it. For individuals who are disabled, they should never hop out in their room. Imagine how this happens, hours every day, hundreds of students missing, without social interaction. You have to worry about all of them. You should not have to worry about all of you without a mask on. In the past month, there was a hundred cases in one day. You have no idea what a spike might happen again, so please do whatever you see. Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Isabel Cunyaro. I wish to respond to a claim made at the last LASD school board meeting that most European countries do not mandate masks in schools. As a European citizen, I was quite surprised by this claim. Please note that at the very least, Portugal, Spain, France, Italy, Belgium, and Germany all mandate masks for all students in mandatory education, which begins at age six. Austria and the Netherlands do not require masking, but they do require weekly PCR tests. Masking requirements have been dropped in the UK and the Nordic countries, but note that over 75% of the entire population is fully vaccinated in all of these countries. In contrast, only 51% of Union County is fully vaccinated.
Good evening, Lewisburg families, staff, board members. My name is Tracy Paul. I'd like to introduce you to my four children. Olivia is an eighth grader. David is a sixth grader. Logan is a third grader. And there is a second grader. And yes, I have to write it down because there's four of them. These kids and all the others here, and those that are at home, are the beauty source. In the past two years, all of my children stated that they do not live school, want to be homeschooled or cyber-schooled. How about a second grader not want to go to school? Why wouldn't an eighth grader want to go to school dances? Why doesn't a third grader want to meet up with friends at recess? As a parent, I'm concerned. Sure, the work gets harder, maybe one reason. Sure, kids can be mean and say hurtful things. Both of these issues can be dealt with, and there are practices in place to help students overcome those reasons for disliking school. Thank you for having policies that address those. My husband and I have investigated these potential causes and do not believe that is what our kids are suffering from. We believe that the school climate and pandemic policies greatly affected our kids' welfare school. No field trips, too much learning, glass around desks that disturb the social interaction, constant interruptions because of contact tracing, masks that inhibit communication. Many of these practices have been lifted because the consequences of continued use outweighs benefits. The policy that hasn't changed those mandatory masks. While some in this district believe masks have only been beneficial, I'm here to reiterate that that belief is not true. For some, masking is merely a nuisance, but for others, it's harmful, and we've heard from some of those students tonight. Some of you believe we stayed in person because of universal masking. Many others believe one-way proper fitting masks will do the same. Other parents have expressed learning disabilities that are heightened because of masks. Some children are dealing with mental health issues because of masks. If mask-wearing is having negative effects on some children, shouldn't we all be working on policies that help those kids? Isn't that your job? To provide each student with a personally relevant, intellectually stimulating, innovative educational program, supported by caring relationships in a physically and emotionally safe learning environment. Last meeting, many of you expressed that you care for all students, but your actions speak louder than your words. Mandatory masking might protect the physical well-being of some students, but at the same time obstructs the education development for other students. Please reflect your care of all students by changing the wording of your mask policy to recommend instead of required. This does not exclude anyone from wearing a mask if they desire to. As a math teacher, let me leave you with a problem in regards to masks. Is one cloth mask plus one cloth mask greater than one properly fitted mask? One-way masking is effective, and it's time to do our parents and students the best for their educational experience.
Let's see, I have four, five, six. I have seven left, but you know, we can do those later. It's up to you.
Can I ask how many of the people there are? Okay, I will allow those two people to speak and speed read the online ones?
I can.
I would like to extend the time to let everyone speak if they'd like to. I think that people are willing to come out and express their concerns. It's important for members to be honest.
So a motion from Professor, second shot, Dr. Quan, we all in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Okay, go ahead and take the folks in the room.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have two concerns to share regarding the mask candidate portion of the proposed health and safety policy. While I still believe in the efficacy of appropriate masks in certain settings, my stance on masking in schools has evolved. Our reasoning is informed by the CDC, period of due medical research, and the local medical community. The first is the policy focused on universal masking in schools as a primary tool for preventing community transmission and protecting medically high-risk individuals. The best protection for the families include high-risk patients, as stated by the CDC, and is consensus among healthcare providers. If you get vaccinated, wear a mask that provides the highest level of protection, socially distance, seek medical intervention early if they contract COVID, as there are several. There are significant interventions now available at our local hospitals. These measures are what significantly reduce the risk of mortality from COVID for the most fragile patients, not our children wearing masks, cloth masks in school. If community members are unwilling to take these measures, then these hope is your efforts to protect them directly to those families. Their personal healthcare team should be advising them, their chances of survival is drastically improved with these measures and reduce morbidity of the Omicron variant. The second concern I have is the lack of balance and transparent input from healthcare professionals to inform the policy. If you were including local healthcare professionals in your council, please provide specifics on your communications with them and their recommendations to LASD. Geisinger parties with Warrior Run to develop their health and safety plan, reference on the title page, which no longer requires universal masking. Is Geisinger one of the local healthcare organizations who are seeking medical advice? If so, why is your conclusion different from the school board Warrior Run? We go a long way in community acceptance of your decision, as you also formed a partnership with Geisinger and the National Health Department to craft our policy. Moreover, why is the conclusion of this board regarding masks different than all of our surrounding districts, who serve the same healthcare institution? Have you reached out to your peer board members in these districts to find out why they feel a problem with their health and safety policies? Why are we mandating masks for our schools and surrounding districts if no run was successful in giving that decision up to families? Of county-level case counts or a logical barrier to use for school-based policies with the prior COVID strains, isn't it worth considering different metrics, the more infectious get mild, the Omicron variant? One simply needs to look at the significantly lower hospitalization and mortality rates. I understand here are an remarkably better situation now. In closing, respectfully, please return this important decision to the LASD families and their healthcare providers by removing the mask candidate tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Our next online comment comes from Sarah Wu. To the LASD board, I am writing again in support of LASD's current health and safety plan. While we continue to learn more about COVID every day, certain facts have remained true since the early days of the pandemic. One of these proven facts is that masks work to prevent the spread of COVID. Studies show that masks reduce the odds of testing positive by 56 to 83%, depending on the type of mask worn. We also know that community transmission rates are an important consideration for what kind of safety precautions are needed, with substantial slash high ratings requiring more safety measures and not less. When rates of transmission are high, more people can catch COVID, which means more people will have to quarantine. We know quarantining and social isolation are harmful to our students' mental health. Masks should be our best friend when transmission rates are high, since masks are the best tool we have to minimize the spread of COVID and minimize the need to quarantine. Experts are also now learning that there is an increased risk of cardiovascular disease after having COVID, even for those who have had mild cases. This should concern all of us, for ourselves and for our children. While the immediate symptoms from COVID may be just like a cold or flu, we don't know enough yet about what the longer-term impacts may be. The moral is that it's just better to do what we can not to get COVID and not to spread it. The board's current plan to lift masking once community transmission drops to moderate or low for two weeks, or CDC changes guidance, makes sense. Lifting masking now when rates are high is counterproductive and only risks keeping COVID alive.
Hello, members of the board and most of the local community members. I'd like to thank you all very much for your dedication on this board to ensure that we are all getting our education and best of our own, especially in this very difficult context. I hope you are all aware that 11 cases of COVID-19 were detected on February 22nd, 2020. This was, of course, two days ago. And on average, there are 28 infected cases of COVID within the United States area. I would like to reference the Center for Disease Control, which has stated numerous times that although cases within communities across the United States are decreasing, the most efficient way to maintain that downward trend is to continue to enforce universal indoor masking policies for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to capable or educational institutions, regardless of vaccination status. National Health Institute further recommends that we must make a masking and social distancing policies, not only within schools, but also within our council cities, if your areas within the U.S., which is where Union County currently is, and those counties that are older. Now, I understand many of the other points that a lot of people raise who are pro the option of wearing a mask or not. However, I do have to say that the reason that COVID has lasted this long throughout our lives for Indian student years now or so, is because we eventually interpret a point as humans where we see areas on the media where it says that COVID is decreasing, COVID cases are decreasing. However, then we begin to worry less and less, then we begin to uncover our faces, and then eventually we see COVID cases spike. And this is again because we are wearing masks. So I simply request that until it is safe and fully recommended by the CDC and other national health institutions across the United States, that this board remains their current policy on social distancing and masking, given the various goals. And therefore, with the accumulated evidence that I stated previously, I would like to thank this board for their time and attention and heavily advise partners to take into consideration. Thank you all very much, members. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. It's coming, I'll leave you for it. Thank you.
Okay. Our next online comment comes from Miranda Weichel. I believe Lewisburg needs to update their health and safety policy regarding masking for students. My reasoning being, all local school districts surrounding Lewisburg area have already dropped the mask mandate. It has been proven that only 0.00000008% of kids even get COVID, therefore, there is no need for masks. This is a Pennsylvania-specific data. I believe we are creating more emotional and mental health issues for our children. Please review the PACE data that was just released during COVID. First, one in 10 sixth graders has attempted or tried to commit suicide. The masks play a role, and these are shocking statistics.
Everyone follows fire size or page rankings. Paige is a second grader, Kelly elementary. And Paige, I just want to ask, to my daughter, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Okay? So, first question, how do you feel about masks? And why do you like it? That's great. And why don't you like it? Are you scared?
Okay.
Yes.
And Paige, how do you feel about masks? It's not very good. You got a second one? You haven't?
No.
You haven't gotten a second one? See, it's probably the get-out-of-the-teacher. I guess. Okay, well, here's Angie and I. And therefore, you should quarantine. Remember that, remember? From Thanksgiving? Okay, Paige, I just want you to come back here. Where were we earlier today? When I asked you guys to go to the school? At your counseling? How long have you been going down there? And the beginning of square? Yeah. The daddy was getting shit. Who got hurt? Yeah, I remember. It was during the pandemic. I'm pointing to a second grader who is going to counseling. I am going to counseling as a mother. This is not political anymore. I am sick of hearing compromises. I'm sick of hearing people saying that it's master effective, master ineffective. It doesn't matter at this point. It is affecting the mental health of our children. I am, I cannot believe that we can stand here today, here from someone whose child attempted suicide, whose kids are going to counseling, and we are not addressing the opposite end of the spectrum. How is that okay? I understand that there are so many kids that feel safer with masks on. And for those of you who feel safe with masks on, I am so grateful that we have masks, that we live in the United States of America, and can get masks now in 2022, whenever we want, right? Very different from 2020. In 2020, just let's, let's be real here, we were encouraged not to wear the mask. We should have given them to the hospital. Right? 2021, masks were all available. Great, everyone wear a mask. I, I just wanted to point out the things for everyone, just remind everyone here what this board has already done. We've contact traced well beyond the PA Department of Health. We've purchased layers of protection, including visible plastic desk shields at the elementary school level until April 2021. We've improved ventilation. We refinanced our debt. We refinanced our debt so that we can provide better pitch back in practice. We socially distanced. We've done everything we can, removed classrooms aboard, how we all entered, parents, teachers, how many things that you have to take out of your classrooms just so that you can be better, easier to clean, excuse me. We consistently provided vaccination information. We've consistently provided vaccination information. And for people who want to get vaccinated, please get vaccinated. We know that's the best way. We've coordinated vaccination for staff aid. We have classes, lunch, and other activities.
Thirty seconds.
We've purchased N95s available for student staff and visitors. Use, we've done a lot of clubbing tonight. I love a round of applause for the school board who's made all these things happen. And I personally spoke to them, so I can impact anybody else. The measure that they've taken to keep the transmission low. And now I just want you guys to acknowledge that you are all doing your best. This is not a win or lose situation.
Five minutes.
This is not your problem. This is COVID. But I am asking you to please consider all the things that these kids have already done, all of the things that they've already done. We've, we've not asked you to mask since we, since we've been well-styled, that Omicron is significant and different than any virus that we've basically dealt with. So I just want you to explain why when we hear emergency medicine doctors from Kaiser today, why when we hear from students, and I understand there's no right answer here, but why when we're hearing all the doctors, the teachers, administrators speaking up, and the CDC has even said it ups the local fitness values based on the insight into local transmission? Today, our research by these count is seven. So I would like you all to explain to my second grader what she and her classmates have not done for the last two years, and, and how is what they have done not enough? And that's actually not a rhetorical question. She deserves an answer. You were given the power to listen to all of these voices and advocate for education. So why is her education not for it? Why do we have to miss classes so that we can go to the outdoor? And why do you think that the Old Navy and Target masks are the things pulling the schools together when clearly you've done enough things to make it work to this point?
Our next online comment comes from Kevin Willie. Thank you for keeping our kids and teachers safe this school year. LASD is the only district in the region that followed the science and common sense recommendations. Due to that, our kids have remained in class while others were at home disrupting their education and their parents' lives. Please continue to follow the science. Masking for the remainder of the school year is a minor inconvenience to keep everyone safe and in school.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board members for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dr. Lori Nolberg, and I am a mother of two college elementary school students, a veterinarian, and a co-owner of a local veterinary hospital in my husband. Although my patients are human, I am trained in virology, epidemiology, and public health, and can understand the evergreen access to this pandemic. So currently, to be able to send our children to LASD schools, but I'm saddened and scared that for listening to all the comments in the last meeting and reviewing your revised health and safety plan, I feel that we need a different approach to the mask behavior. Our first and primary concern is whether the health and safety of our children and staff. I empathize with all of those negative impacts by masks. I assume that in my language and word release, I fire each student and find fire by the inability to read and influence persons, but only our eyes are showing. What happens to these students if we are forced to go to virtual learning? We've eliminated the mitigation efforts that have kept us in person this long. One study from Arizona revealed that schools were three and a half times more likely to have COVID-19 outbreaks if they did not have a mask for quite a minute. We also seem to be forgetting about new unit effects that optional masking can bring. I trust parents to not send their children to school with the only one variant, which requires two days before any symptoms have been shown. I understand that we all have pandemic fatigue. I understand that people are going about their life like COVID is over, but many of us are not. Many of us are double and triple vaccinated and still wearing masks indoors around anyone outside of our household. Many of us are still attending religious services virtually. Many of us are still doing grocery pickup. Our children do not attend in your after-school activity until they were vaccinated, and they are around home with a handful of children now that are currently masked. But extracurricular activity are optional. School is not. School is to be a safe place for our children to learn and to grow, and that needs to remain our number one priority. Now is not the time to drop the mask mandates. Please delay until a community commitment is dropped. Thank you for your time.
Our next online comment comes from Princey Chaco, who writes, would like to see universal masking mandate to stay in place.
All right. Good evening. My name is Ross Muir. I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak at the last meeting. Hold on, I haven't probably invited you to speak yet. I appreciate the opportunity to once again address the board and the member of our community. Last meeting, you're passionate, well-articulated statements on both sides of mask mandate policy. Very eye-opening, me, me, honestly, to hear that. Okay, very, uh, it's obvious that all the members of this community are both, A, truly concerned about the coronavirus pandemic, as well as B, the health and well-being of themselves, their children, and their families at home. I want to say, I urge you, I hear you, and I, I pray, we all have soft hearts to hear both sides. Well, there was a tremendous amount of data, dialogue, firsthand accounts shared last meeting and this meeting. I want to use the remainder of my time to see to make sure that the pro-choice side is better understood. I hope that I might be able to highlight where the we are coming from, and I'm using that term loosely because I do not speak for anyone directly in this group other than my wife and my daughters at home. I sincerely pray your hearts are open to hearing, just as mine was last week. One side is pro-mask mandate, period, and that's it. That's what it is, a mandate, you must wear a mask. The other side is pro-choice. It's not a mandate. I want to be clear here. We are not asking for all masks to be removed by all students and staff. That would be an extreme, the complete opposite end of the spectrum. That is exactly what is currently taking place. What we are suggesting is that if you believe in the protection of masks, if you want your child to wear one, it's completely understandable. It's completely understandable. It's your choice, and we, the people that are pro-choice, are behind you a thousand percent, behind you, a hundred percent. It's your child. It's your choice to make an informed decision that best fits your students' needs. I can't be more clear here. One side is simply asking for the freedom of choice, while the other side, it's my way or the highway. And that approach can't continue. We are not advocating for a maskless environment. We are advocating for our school boards to trust their parents and guardians with the best decision for their students' physical and mental health. The parents and guardians making the decision for their children and their children alone. There has to be a middle ground, right? Are we that far gone as community? We are all clearly aligned on wanting the best for our children. All of us want that, physically, emotionally, academically, athletically, and in the avenues that our great school district provides, all of them. We want that. I know we do. The mask mandate should not and cannot continue to be such a divisive topic in our community. We go to Walmart, we make our own personal choice. We go to Target, we go to the Country Cover, for the one more day. But we made that choice. Yet again, I come before you all and all the community. I'm asking you for a vote as a board of administrators, leaders in our community. Vote tonight to give our students, staff, teachers, and kids a chance, not a mandate, a chance to show their smiles, show their faces, enunciate a little bit better, and communicate more freely verbally or nonverbally for the first time in two years. Thank you. God bless you. God bless everyone in this room, and God bless the school, the school.
Our next online submission comes from Beth Confer. Dear LASD School Board, my husband and I want to thank you for your ongoing support of our students and school district. It is certainly not an easy time to be a school board member, and we appreciate all you are doing to keep the students safe and in person. It is great news to see that the data supporting the elimination of contact tracing enabled LASD to move forward and prioritize the education of students. Kudos to each of you on working together to remove contact tracing. Today, we have two concerns. We will break into this two sections to comply with the allotted time permitted. First is to raise concerns regarding non-scientific data commentary made from the community during the last school board meeting because it can lead to scientific misconceptions. The second half is to present some of the CDC's own masking data and how it can be misinterpreted. The most common statement at the last school board meeting was that LASD needs to continue wearing masks because other surrounding school districts previously made masks optional, and those districts at some point had to go remote. One important fact in statistics is that correlation does not imply causation, meaning one event doesn't cause the other event to happen. You cannot make an inference from this non-scientific data as it is impossible to control for such variables as the degree of community spread, vaccination status, school ventilation, et cetera. Additionally, we do not agree with the benchmark of relaxing universal masking based on the date of March twenty-eighth. Why can't it be February twenty-eighth? We certainly appreciate your efforts in working towards ending universal masking. However, this date appears to be arbitrary. What healthcare professionals, community data, and peer-reviewed medical articles determine the March twenty-eighth date? The most current information from the PA Department of Health for Union County school-aged children, this includes ages five to eighteen, for the period of February ninth to February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, is five cases and zero deaths. This includes four school districts, of which three have removed universal masking. If this state, if this data is based on community data from Union County, why have other districts come to a different conclusion and given the choice of wearing a mask? What is so different in our district that makes March twenty-eighth the day chosen to remove universal masking? Thank you for listening, and my husband, a physician, will comment on the CDC studies during his allotted time period.
I don't see anybody else in the room. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Dave Jacobson, and I just had a couple of comments. One is, I, I actually agree with previous statement that a date is arbitrary. In my opinion, the date to stop requiring wearing masks should be based on transmission rate. So I don't understand an arbitrary date is setting at five weeks after a vaccine is available, because we don't know what the transmission rate are. We don't know what, how dangerous it will be. I just wanted to correct a couple of this statement. One is that we're at low rent. Currently, the CDC has a, had a, in, of four different levels of transmission rate. We are currently at the highest rate. You're in the high transmission rate right now. Even though numbers are down, our current transmission rate is the highest possible we have with. So that usually suggests that masking is solely required. And I, again, I would link the removal of requiring masks to transition rate. Secondly, we've heard a couple of few times these days that the CDC no longer recommends requiring masks, that it's the only facility or it's the option. I just want to read from the CDC website right now. CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students aged two years and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. That's from the CDC website. Again, somehow people are disinformed about what the CDC is recommending. This is straight from the CDC. They're still recommending universal indoor masking by all students. I won't read, but it's clear what the CDC recommends. So, um.
Our next online comment comes from Brad Confer. He writes, dear School Board, as a continuation of our masking concerns referenced by my wife Beth in her allotted time slot, I, as a physician, wanted to review two studies that the CDC based their universal masking policy on. Both were published in the CDC's own publication of Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report, which is not peer-reviewed data. The first study looked at masking versus no masking in two large Arizona counties from July to August twenty-twenty-one. The data presented shows a three-point-five-fold reduction in COVID cases in the mass group, which is promising information. However, there were methodological limitations. The first limitation in the Arizona study is the time bias. Many of the mass schools that started later, six weeks versus three weeks, were obviously given a longer exposure time. This can explain the higher cases in the unmasked group. The authors define an outbreak as being two or more COVID-19 cases among students or staff members at a school within a fourteen-day period that are epidemiologically linked. The measure of two cases in school doesn't tell us if the transmission occurred in school or outside of school. At the time, unmasked students considered close contacts were subject to testing and quarantine. As a result, students in schools with mask mandates may have been less likely than schools and, than students in schools without mask mandates to get tested following an initial exposure. This creates a detection bias. Finally, and most importantly, the authors want to, unable to control for multiple confounding factors such as vaccination status, meaning higher vaccination rates in the mass group would likely explain the lower risk of infections. Other confounding variables not controlled for include social distancing and the ventilation status of individual schools. New York Magazine columnist David Zwig pointed out that forty of the included schools were undergoing virtual learning at the time. How can you have school transmission of COVID-19 from virtual learning? Doesn't the inclusion of virtual schooling make you question the quality of the research being done? The authors did finally recognize that this was a limitation to the study. In conclusion, this study reemphasizes why physicians and scientists such as myself participate in the peer review process to ensure the scientific integrity of what is published and ensure it is utilized appropriately. The second CDC study, which was also not peer reviewed, evaluated more than ninety thousand students in Georgia elementary schools in the fall of twenty-twenty. This was to evaluate masking versus no masking and the role of ventilation on the risk of COVID-19 transmission. The authors note that the findings suggest universal and correct mask use is an important COVID-19 prevention strategy. The CDC pointed out that the relative risk reduction for transmission of COVID-19 in the mass group was twenty-one percent. However, they neglected to tout the non-significance confidence interval of point five zero to one point oh eight. The interpretation when a confidence interval crosses one is a non-significant result. In other words, there was no statistical evidence that wearing, that mask wearing reduced COVID-19 transmission in more than ninety thousand elementary kids compared to those without a mask. This is the most definitive evidence that there is no benefit to mask wearing of children in schools. Again, this underscores the necessity of a peer review process to ensure the integrity of scientific data. As a board member, we imagine you never thought your role would be interpreting scientific data and comprehending peer review versus non-peer reviewed journal articles. It can be an overwhelming task and can be a bit to digest, so we respectfully encourage you as a school board in reviewing, in your review of this information, to seek out other healthcare professionals and scientists who can help clarify the data. Furthermore, the LASD school board role is the education of LASD students, not serving in a capacity to interpret and implement healthcare information based on scientific studies. This makes it even more imperative that each family and their physician make the choice if a mask is appropriate for their situation. Sincerely, Brad Confer. I've got one on, one more online. Okay. This one's gonna, all right, here we go. This one comes from Tim Connelo. I want to thank this board for giving the parents and students past and current the opportunity to discuss with you the issue of continuation of mandatory masking in our school district. I have heard the rationale on both sides of this issue, but there is solid evidence that this latest COVID variant can be compared to an express train speeding through a station and contact tracing compared to counting the number of people on the train through the window as it speeds past. I am pleased that the contact tracing has been discontinued because it never gave us reliable information that we could objectively act on to slow the furthest spread of Omicron. We might not have known that going into the decision to trace, but it has become abundantly clear on the tail end of this that it was almost useless. I'm glad the board seems to have followed the science on this. Leading to my next point, I read an editorial in the local paper and listened on conversations and the mantra that following the science is front and foremost the most important thing this board has always done. On one side of the issue, science is with a capital S, as if it is a single institution that has only the best interests of the people it serves, and it is itself a neutral body of researchers and clinicians that only looks at facts. Much faith and authority is given to science with a big S to prescribe our collective response to this pandemic. Some of the recommendations have even become law or at least mandated by employers if a person wants to continue to work at that place. There is another side that also sees science with a big S, but they perceive it as unreliable and ill intentioned. This side doesn't trust capital S science and may even go so far as to believe this body of scientists is part of a larger coordinated movement to strip Americans of basic rights as an individual. Both of you are wrong. Science is not a, is not static. It continually tests and retests the basis or the hypothesis and forms a best guess with a margin of error. They never give us absolute certainty, so the idea that we can get to a state of COVID-zero if only we tighten screws a little bit tighter is just silly. What distresses me most, though, is that this issue has turned political, not only here in our community but across the country, and both sides have at times and in their turn demonized the other side by questioning their motives and their hidden agenda, while each side firmly believes they hold the moral high ground and are doing it in the best interests of their children. The advocacy for the best interests of our children reside first with their parents, even when you don't agree with them. Please save me from the illiberal and Please save me from the illiberal intention that believes they know best for my child. Also, please save me from the parents who place their children at risk of serious harm because they don't take the time to listen and learn and consider vaccines as dangerous and a government plot to control the people. I can't believe I said that out loud, but I have heard it said to me. Right now, the science says that the train has left the station on mandatory masking of children, and if this board wants to catch the last car before they are left alone on the platform, they should drop the well-intentioned but now outdated notion that masking in our students is still a wise idea. Masks are essentially adult pacifiers at this point. If a parent chooses for their child to wear one, I have no issue with that. They are the authority. But an unmasked child poses little to no threat to your child or to you, assuming you are vaccinated, except perhaps to your notion that you need to make my decisions for me because I don't know any better. Our children are resilient up to a point, and they have tolerated our heavy-handed approach to this pandemic. But now COVID is endemic, and we have to find new ways to live with it. I fear masks are always going to be with us. I have to wear one all day in the hospital if I want to practice there. But I am not a child, and I only suffer discomfort, not the stunted development of critical neurological connections, emotional and social skills, and psychological distress. Our caseload of COVID patients has dropped from over three hundred to now one hundred COVID-positive patients in the health system. I think that the board can rationally and reasonably suspend mandating masks and still come down on the right side of science here.
I want to thank everybody who's been so this evening, both online and in person, and I want to thank everyone for the patience and the time to hear what everybody had to say. We do have a couple of agenda items before we come through our discussion of the health and safety plan, but I assure you we'll get there expeditiously. And we will turn to board representative comments to have a game of this.
Thank you, just to keep up with our creativity. I just want to highlight one thing. Last few weeks, I've been able to get into a number of classrooms and observe a lot, a number of lessons. I just want to thank our teachers, like the, it's amazing. This week, I've seen everything from talking about life cycles in the classroom, planting seeds, to students who are actively involved in trying to connect the real world to their math learning to, you know, a, you know, another classroom that they are doing kindness activities every day for our social-emotional learning curriculum. I'm just very thankful to all the adults that are keeping our kids really highly engaged, interested in what they're doing, making learning fun. So thank you, George.
Thank you.
I think at school, it's always for opportunities to celebrate, to have fun, but also do learning activities. So we do not jump on the opportunity to celebrate Day Two on a Tuesday, two twenty-two, twenty-two. So we had, we encouraged students just to wear, you know, tutus, two ties, two shirts, two pails, a few coats, no takers. We even had two students dress as two-hundred-and-twenty-year-old people with wigs, gags, you name it. They even tried to throw out some two-hundred-and-twenty-year-old humor with their jokes. So it's just a fun way to celebrate that day in February. Please visit our Facebook page to see some of those pictures of those students. And next week is Read Across America Week, which is another great week in the time to celebrate. We have a theme set up for each day, and just to celebrate reading, where we have several activities that we're planning and developing for that week. So just another fun week that we're looking forward to. And then the last thing, also next week, we're very fortunate that we're working on having Sun Tech come to Lindtown, and we're gonna have our fourth graders gonna be able to go into the cafeteria. And as many of our students that are able that are at Sun Tech will be coming. So just a great opportunity for them to come back, to visit the elementary schools, for our students to connect with them and look up to them and see what they're doing and to learn about what Sun Tech's all about, the trades and shops that are available there. Just a great, great learning opportunity for our students.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President.
Just to highlight where we are in the school year. I sent out an announcement to staff today about getting their recommendations and requests for fourth marking period clubs. So we're getting to our last cycle. Our student council president is here in the audience tonight. I want to thank him, thank the school council, who's getting involved in the selection of clubs for the, what's being offered. I got a list shared with me today that includes anything from hands-on activities like balls at airplanes, getting those, to scratch coding, cooking, and what has been submitted by teachers already includes architecture and design club. One of our teachers is also an architect, so it'd be a fabulous opportunity for them. And with the spring weather, a wiffle ball and kickball. So indoors, outdoors, hands-on, using your mind, using your creativity. Absolutely flabbergasted by what our kids are able to access. I'm very grateful for the opportunity.
Good evening. I want to talk about some community partnerships that were and are still being created with our beekeeping club. So recently, the beekeeping club has been working with Bucknell and also planning to use the Bluebird Community Garden. So increasing highs with the beekeeping club. They are looking at ordering, they're called nukes, which is the form of bees that will be going with the hives. So the hive will be, you know, being created through beekeeping club, and then they'll be able to install them within the Bluebird Community Garden. And with the help of Bucknell, we'll be able to use the suits and basically be able to care for those hives. So it's a nice bridge with our club to the outside community to increase beekeeping.
Thank you. Just to add onto that, I had no idea that Mr. Leopold, who is one of our math teachers, his mother actually is as a bee, or what, did have a beekeeping. Yeah, several, like business, and as well as the amount of, I did not realize the influence that, you know, central bee bees have throughout the country. So it definitely is very interesting. And Mr. Dernick and Mr. Leopold are club advisors, so just seeing their passion for that is pretty amazing. I, I'm not quite sure what the student council's going to bring up, and I don't want to step on their things, which is, I think, what I was originally going to say. So I'm just going to say that I got word that the real basketball team won their district game. I'm going to say one line of the first one. Yeah. Um, and so, you know, that's a very exciting start to two districts. The boys will be home tomorrow night, and so it's always a crazy but fun time in here. I give a shout out again, if you haven't already gotten your tickets, which is the first weekend in March. Encourage you to do that. Our students are, they just sound amazing. And, you know, the amount of work, not just of your cast that's on stage, but your pit, your makeup, your costume, your stage crew is just phenomenal. And one final word, I just want to say thank you, the board, for eliminating contact tracing at the last meeting. I think I speak for all the administrators, and I say, it has made a huge difference in our lives, in our teachers' lives, in our nurses' lives. And most importantly, they're kids that don't necessarily cringe when they see us. Although sometimes now they recognize that it all from the office, the contact tracing was better than what might await them. But, and I was doing observation the other day in a classroom and had a teacher comment that, you know, I can't believe you didn't get called out or anything. That was the first time that they can remember that I was able to stay up all eighty-four minutes. So it definitely is, is impacting in a positive way. So thank you for doing that. I know it wasn't an easy decision, but it's definitely beneficial. So, yep.
So we have a new teacher. We have invited some representatives from the council at the high school. We will let the rest of the school hang there. Thank you for coming.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kulak. I'm the secretary of the council. My name is David. We're just kind of updating the school board on what we do this year, the upcoming events. On the topic of trigger, we have been doing our club grant this year. Recently, we did a lot of CSA. I just heard from their council, and so the BIC club, what I mean, I don't know. Something I want to update everyone about is this past week, we hosted a blood drive initiative actually at the high school. It was really successful. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but we had around thirty donations. Many come to us, but we couldn't come down. We did need to raise our school, probably one student, they were really excited. And overall, it was a positive experience. I'm sure that it's the first time we've been told to hope that it'll be done throughout their life. And for others, we're going to be doing this, 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 of course. And it's a great opportunity, and you're really happy, skilled, as I said, for these people. And then coming up, March 24th, we're bringing back the talent show. I was just starting a little crowd boost because we're getting a little slumped in this time of the year. And then April 9th, we are bringing back our local strength carnival. I was working very hard for a closing event that allows clubs to, like, have their own this people's, you're going to watch this, and I'm like, oh, so that's always fun. You open it up, so it's like Kelly's, you know. As we have. That brings us to our board action. The first item is the CSI proposed general operating committee. After the bottom, is that?
This is the proposed committee with CSI. There's a brochure. I can't remember if you did, here with what service knowledge, yes, I did. Five for, and how it would be paid for additional services.
By Dr. Jabonski, is there a second? Right next, second to the discussion. During that, we'll call with people.
Mr. Fester?
Yes.
Ms. Ingles?
I love saying, I'm joyful.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unzicker Casero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion, Aaron?
Thank you, Paul. If I could give you an announcement?
No.
We are going to have a two-hour delay of this letter tomorrow. Everybody's totally different, so it's okay a lot.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Just one more thing.
Yep.
Okay, then that brings us to the next item of the consequences. If I have my two open dates planned, is there a motion to approve? And then we'll have a second, and then we'll have a discussion. By Dr. Jabonski, for a second. Okay, second to the second clients. Yes.
One of, one of the things that we just learned about that's not really so present in the new enforcement events that are happening across the world, the CDC is set tomorrow to update their recommendations on how they determine what the new spread looks like. We don't know what that's going to look like, you know, the fact that it's a cloud. But with the Omicron variant and the fact it is so transmissible, but it is a cause of serious disease, they're going to be revising how communities that would be classified as potentially, as long as it's not infected, that could be beneficial for us.
And I'll just comment that the point, as it is written, should the CDC change their recommendation, then the, the sort of things having proven masking become a possibility. Again, we don't know what that recommendation should be, but we're all looking for that.
I think we can assume that it's not going to get more stringent. I mean, and, you know, we're assuming that probably what would end up happening is moving to moderate or low based on the new recommendation.
Message has gone out. Your phones will start ringing.
Dr. Jabonski, can you talk about, because we were at several times tonight. Can you just speak to who we are advised by, what our work with both ICNAR and EVAN? And, you know, specifically the other school districts who, you know, have crisis mayor top the front of their helping to keep in, what our understanding of what happens there was.
I can share with the community that we regularly see.
That's it.
And often the ICNAR. Those organizations that are representing what the innovation says, individuals that work there or associated with them, they say something different as private citizens. The organization continues to recommend that we follow the new recommendations. The case of Warrior One, which was brought up today, I suppose, specifically in the balance and has hard toward on state and represent ICNAR well down the path, that it better understand how ICNAR's endorsement, the future Allison certainly part of the team. She did a chair by the position of, you know, the program, the program. But it's a community, that community can make that and make whatever decision is efficient to make. So that's, that's a little bit of clarification of something that may not be readily in the wide of public. But I don't suspect that the organization itself or the power is anything different. So we're going to see some change in this, which hopefully.
The discussion is a little bit more to you about, like, literally from day one. You've been consulting with folks from EVAN and from BAY. Like, that's not something that we have not entertained from the start. And we have been talking, I can speak to my husband, but I have been teaching teachers and getting feedback from teachers. And I know that a lot of other books on the board are doing that as well. And therefore, people are falling on both sides of the gap, right? It's something to go some way and something to go another way. But that's not, not, not applicable. It's not the only one.
And the superintendent's meeting was, unfortunately, ends up being half of the agenda just in our handling contact tracing and masking, different decisions that are being. So we're very much in touch with one another, actually in touch with one another to figure out what we need tomorrow as well to solve, moving ahead of time. But, you know, but it's difficult because our community is different. We're, we've asked parents to provide vaccination information so we have a better sense of how to vaccinate. And, and some parents have, and some parents choose to withhold that. They feel that that's just their private business, and that's fine, that's absolutely okay. But it makes it simple for us to come up with a metric to understand where our vaccination rates are with schools if we don't have that. It's not something that's required. We don't receive that as something that's required. We do not recommend that on the part of the district. It's something that's standing in, like, usually, um, to develop, and has to stay with all of us. So, you know, it's, I think we're in this place now, one of the things that has really changed is we're seeing that this all our Skype in January, we're seeing our places going down. According to the CDC forecast, really by mid-March to the end of March, we will see very few cases if their forecasting models are at all accurate. But that's the best data that we have, and we'll see something that's built and set up on the internet. We are not close to having a first class, getting four nightclubs and comments. So if it succeeds here tonight, it would take for us to be close and have thirty to, between January and forty-two, six months in each of the schools in order to close. And we haven't been there. We got a little bit closer than I think any of us would come to go back on January, the Omicron. But we're well past that right now, fifty miles, I mean, as much with our students. And staff, we have a kind of.
So it's probably no surprise. I have a bit of things to say. As Dan, thank you for reminding us all that we've talked to EVAN and Geisinger in school center. And I would like to point out that this summer of 2020, we're deciding to come back to in-person, both Geisinger and EVAN, the incoming emergency management. All right. both Geisinger and EVAN, the incoming emergency management, all recommended, even though the department of health recommended that we go virtual because of our status in the county, all of those organizations were very comfortable with us over in person. Even though the community, it was not a popular decision, for some it was, for others it wasn't. We, we went with the recommendation. We actually went against the recommendation, which part of the health. So while I respect those opinions and the recommendations, we have not, as a board, always relied on that. We've gone against those recommendations. On Thursday, February seventeenth, the Secretary of Education, the Pennsylvania Secretary of Education, will take a post of the webinar superintendent across the state, directors of CDCs. It was led by Dr. Sherry Smith. They were discussing a very dire mental health situation in April twelve. When we're talking about public health, I've said this for two years now, there's a lot more to talk about than just COVID when we're discussing public health. We're in a very serious mental health crisis right now. Dr. Blakely, I believe, thank you for your comments this evening. Thank you for everybody's comments. But, you know, I'll speak to those because I had to. I appreciate your comments this evening. That is a very real situation. As COVID numbers are going down, we're seeing drug usage going. We're seeing teen suicides going down. We're seeing so many numbers that are staggering. We got the preliminary on the education, preliminary results from our P data, which are those of you in the audience who might not know what P is, what the P survey is. Many of you have students, so you probably know. It measures some of the climate here in this country. It's a statewide initiative and we participated in it over the past few years. The P survey is staggering. Our standardized testing is staggering. Again, we haven't gotten the full results, but I would predict that we'll continue to see some of these decline in numbers. To me, that's, that's really present right now. While I, again, I value the health professional field and value your, but we also need to look at education. We also need to think, when the Secretary of Education was recognizing it as a statewide issue, we need to do something about that. The rapport in our district that students and teachers have, I would argue, is at an all time low. Morale across faculty, staff, students is at a low right now. And while I don't attribute that, and I'm not going to think that that's all because of the masking. But I do believe that when teachers, administrators, no offense to any of them, because we're asking you guys to enforce these things. When you're spending the time, as Reeve raised that tonight, and we're going to call you out. Sorry, he said it as a joke, but I don't see it as a joke. When we walk into a room and kids up our heads, they shouldn't be cringing when we see the high school president. This is a serious issue right now. And our decisions that we're making tonight are affecting negatively. We heard from students as young as a second grader suffering through some mental health issues right now. And the board continues to say, all we want to talk about is COVID. We're going to turn our backs on everything else. We're not even going to entertain these things. We're just going to talk about COVID. Friday, February eleventh, eighteen hours after our last board meeting, an email from central office on actual parents regarding after school masks. And the email said, I don't have a direct answer for you right now. I don't blame the central office administrators. I don't blame students, parents, teachers for understanding or not understanding our policies. I blame the board for passing policies that are inconsistent and and very confusing for people to understand. When central office can't offer a direct answer, eighteen hours after a board meeting, let me pass a policy, that's an issue to me. I hope that's an issue to everybody. But we're in a severe crisis right now with mental health. And I urge the board members to please consider other things other than COVID. Please consider COVID as well, but we need to talk about public health right now. And we need to talk on it at a greater length than just COVID. So with that, I would make a motion to amend the health and safety plan that we recommend.
Second that motion.
Mr. Fester, you made the amendment and Dr. Unzicker Casero seconded. So we are now discussing the amendment.
No, you can discuss the amendment. The amendment.
So one thing that kind of came out there, both of you, the one thing that we have a word is because of COVID and with masking. I will say, I think that what it brings up some really good in that. I think that it was a different time in the beginning of the year. There was a difference in masking. I think that it's always important to look out for the community. I think to look out for the vulnerable population. I do think at this time that with the change in masking, yes, it should be a vaccine rate. That I noticed a mental health part of it is one of the vulnerable populations of the community. I think that that should be a community consideration of masking. But I'm wondering the timeframe a little bit more because for a lot of children's anxiety, we've heard that on both sides. We've heard kids with masking, they had anxiety when they were without masks. We've heard kids that had anxiety when they had a mask. So I would be concerned if we say we're past the most that that I love tomorrow, if you want to do it with masking optional. I think that is also being used as a source for a large portion of people that have placed comments here in the comments. I think that people will be trying to process. But I do think that we can't dismiss the mental health that is happening, the mental health issues, as that also being vulnerable population in that just a little time during COVID. I do have some concerns that we think removing masking is going to follow that. And I have some concerns on the steps that we'll take for the teachers because of what are willing to choose to send their kids masking. They mask. We've heard a lot about kids should be able to choose. I don't agree with that. It is parents' choice. We've also heard a lot of that in school. Though that's not to say that things are going to change. I want to just do with that. But as parents' choice, I think we need to feel comfortable that teachers are going to support that if kids are being sent a mask. But, you know, I know my kindergarten, there's still going to be something every single day throughout the day here. And I think that is going to continue to strengthen on teachers and staff. So I think the community would want to know that that's still being done, that they're not sending their kids, and that kids are not needing that. Like, I don't think that all things are informed yet. I think they should have that choice. They should not be, we don't give all of our control. But I think we would need to work up a nice game of rolling lives to mask.
I would say that we've given funds, notice that we've been discussing these. And I would also say that the Governor Wolf's administration through PDE and through the Department of Health overnight did a mandate requiring masking back at the beginning of the year. So I, I understand the notice. I think that everybody in the district has probably known that we've been discussing this time after time. So, I mean, again, I understand your point, but I do realize, everybody knows, we haven't, we've been given no notice for two years now.
I do think there's not a very different way of adding masking, adding a layer, actually removing masking, removing a layer of current, like, you know, there's a common one, but it's like you got without notice.
What is? In the past, when we talked about changing sporadically or improvement, Dr. Vaughn has suggested, well, let me give them a T to discuss how this new program is viewed by you and actually carry out this to school. And that's been, I think, what we've done to have, so that everyone becomes an understanding of reality through a new plan, they can go to school. For you all in discussing ins and outs.
I would also just propose that if we are moving forward with the end of mandatory masking, we do build in a safeguard of what our local, what the, what the current numbers in the building are. So right now, as Dr. Vaughn commented, at, at, you know, thirty or whatever, five percent, our buildings go to remote learning. So I wouldn't want to make it five percent, but maybe if there is, if we hit three percent or four percent, masks come back in place. Again, I know that Warrior Run, Helping Safety Plan was, you know, pointed out as something that was great, and that is one of the things that they include in that, that they move forward without a mask mandate, but also acknowledging that there might be times when the numbers tend to go back up again, and that safeguard is built back there.
I think the other thing I'd address on that as well is the quarantine period. Right now, we really don't address that because I'm a quarantine patient, because we have a mask mandate. I know, like the Friends, like Health and Safety Plan, if you're from vaccine, you can mask it. It's not optional for days sixteen times. It's not going to be the whole pandemic, but I think if we did, we would have an option, this optional matching, that we wouldn't do, address that quarantine period.
Both of those, like all of those, how many people are speaking about mental health plans? Someone ultimately asked them, right? So the day after last meeting was when they changed the news about the promise of getting vaccinated. So just so everyone can appreciate, when we made that decision about March twenty eighth, we didn't pluck a, you know, a date out of the sky, we had had a discussion about a big, you know, there was, on that Wednesday, there was an article that, you know, Utah was ready to vaccinate. So I was certain that we're going to, if that was going to be a legitimate group. And then, of course, the very next day was the rule. So I do want to first start, the March twenty eighth is again not just a pluck it out of the sky date. You did have a reason for that. There are a lot of children in the district who have your kids and your family who are going to get vaccinated. That said, two statisticians in this community who I respect very, very much are on over opposite ends of where we should be right now. Someone, I think maybe their Congress pointed out, you know, not anyone comfortable with large data sets and scientific information. I sort of am. And I, I am on both sides of this entirely. I think everyone who knows, like, spoken with me recently knows this. I, I want in office, I talk to the group, I don't want to be the anchor of this room here. I'm going to be March twenty eighth at this point. But I do want the administration to have a chance to say, okay, we need to have a time when masks come back if we have significant spread. We need to make sure that there's explicit language about that quarantine period and coming back to mask. Remember, three meetings ago, some of us talked about, oh, we had a discussion on masks to stay, right? Policy in other places in the country, Ohio, for example, had a really great, I think, you know, well-written mask to stay policy. So everything is changing with the frequency and a little bit regular, and it's actually turning out to be irregular because we're up and down with it. And so I also would favor being held masks sooner than later, but we can't do it continuously. There's a lot of things that have to come into play. And so I would refer, these notes that I did, to get the administration. Also, if you have been following, the CDC is expected to significantly change their guidelines tomorrow. I was on a call earlier today with teams of engineering schools from across the country. There are places that have already made, kind of like we just made a call about tomorrow morning weather, that have already made the call that they're going to change their policy tomorrow by PM. So people who have knowledge and are participating with the change, it may happen, it may not, but in anticipation of that change, that's the call I mean. So I think we are very close. We are nearly there. And I hope that we can just create whatever we need to do. You want to name, I don't know. Whatever it is.
It doesn't have to wait until one meeting.
It doesn't have to wait.
If you all get the team together and discuss it, sort of like the whole, what the quarantine needs to be, what the levels need to be, the ramp mask, all those pieces, you know, that everybody has an answer. You come together, you work that out. You make a reference to us. We have a special meeting. There's no reason that can't exist. Correct?
Building to the state and our, our health and safety plan, Dr. Ball, any superintendent has the power to, to shut down the school if there's any, whether it's COVID or anything else, machine and shut down the school at any point. Not that I want the schools to be shut down. I mean, going to record that. But I would give the discretion then to Dr. Ball to say, you know what, I'm, you know, we're at a point where I'm not comfortable, we're going to put back to masking. I was just really fine with giving that discretion to our administrators. I'll amend my motion then to put it into effect then Monday morning because of this, you know, because of CDC's announcements tomorrow. If that's what other people are just saying, I'm fine with doing it Monday then, or tomorrow at five PM. But I think that if that's anticipation, then we should anticipate that when we can before.
Can I, can I add just a couple of comments?
Corey. No change to the plan is necessary. Should the CDC change their guidance, the plan as written makes masks optional.
Corey.
Not need to come back together if, sorry.
I'm sorry. Sorry, when you're done, Corey.
If the CDC changes their guidance, or what we understand they're thinking about is changing the way they calculate high and substantial. So it may be that with our current numbers, we would classify differently. This would move us to lower moderate, which would move us to mask option. I have some point and a further ready. Go ahead, Corey.
I just wanted to chime in after listening to last meeting's comments and then the meeting, the comments tonight from parents and students and those who wrote in. I've said from the beginning, I am in no way a public health expert. I am, however, something of a, of an expert when it comes to doing, doing analyzing threats. And this, this seems to me, if we look at this from the aspect of a, of a threat to our kids, a school safety issue, we, we all know that, we all know that COVID poses a certain amount of risk to everyone. That's, that's not a, that's not an issue. But we also know that the threat of suicide and mental health issues is very, very real. It's something that we, as the board, have spent a lot, a lot of time talking about over, over the years. We also know that the risk, the risk for kids that are in those situations are grave. They're very grave. And I would argue, if you do the, the threat analysis, much more grave than the risk of a kid who contracts COVID. We also know from our own staff that have, that have written to us and talked to us, that we have our own kids in our own school that are being negatively impacted because of speech therapy issues, various other individualized needs that kids have, that, that the masks are actually preventing them from doing their jobs or preventing us from doing our jobs. So I would, I would say, just doing a threat analysis, a threat assessment of what we're faced with, we have two very imminent issues that masks are creating for some of our students. And on the other side of the fence, you have a, a low level risk for everyone. For me, that's an easy, it, an easy way to look at it that actually makes sense more than trying to read scientific studies from one person or another. I think we have to very seriously consider the negative impact that our policy is having. It's not a question we've heard tonight and we've heard in the past, this policy is having a negative effect on our students. And we have a statutory authority to prevent negative impacts on our students and to, and to protect them the best we can. I know that kids have fragile family members at home, and I'm very sympathetic to that, but we do not have a statutory authority to look out for fragile family members at home. We have to look out for the kids that are, that are in our school district and in our care. And I think we should really consider that in our deliberations when we talk about how much longer to keep doing this.
I think there are, it's, it becomes tricky because as a parent, I don't want anyone's child to have anxiety. But we're put in a position of weighing one parent's child anxiety against another. There are kids here tonight that are saying when the masks come off, that's going to create anxiety for them. So I just. But they are telling you that in an environment where not everyone is masked, that is causing them anxiety. For you to challenge that, I am not challenging anyone who is saying that their kid in a mask is causing them anxiety. And I don't think we can challenge students who are saying that being in a group of however many unmasked people will cause anxiety for them. I, I don't think anyone on the board or in the room who are listening disagrees that mental health is of the utmost importance. It's the reason why a lot of us are here. It's, it's urgent, it's grave. We were talking about mental health before there was a pandemic, and we've been talking about mental health throughout the pandemic.
And I think it is imperative that we all be focusing on the mental health of our students, whether they're wearing masks or not. Somebody, I, I think it might have been Dr. Conver was speaking about the confusion of correlation and causation. We have a mental health crisis in this country, we have a mental health crisis in this country before there was a pandemic. The masks are aggravating it, the conflict in the community is aggravating it. The children afraid of getting COVID, that is aggravating it, right? We're in a very difficult situation, and that heightens everybody's anxiety. And it is incumbent on the district to help children with their mental health, whether they're wearing masks or not. Getting rid of the masks is not going to make all of the anxiety evaporate.
So I would amend my motion to same, same recommendations, because the plan goes in at five o'clock tomorrow, it goes into effect five o'clock tomorrow. And we give, uh, that, uh, Dr. Ball the, the full power to, uh, have the discretion in any building, it doesn't have to be just applied, it could be a building. Then if she's uncomfortable with the rise in cases, or even potential rise in cases, that, that we could, uh, learn to be administrative, the building level principles. And put a masking, um, you know, masking mandate back into effect out of, out of specific building.
But you've asked us to have things be more exact. So let's have an exact number, an exact percentage in a building where the masks come back, instead of just keeping it on the floor to decide that.
But I don't think that, I'm not the one working with you, Anna Geisler, I'm not the one working with the administrators, none of us as board members are. If we're asking, at some point, we need to put the trust in our, our, our administration.
So let's wait a few days and have them identify some of them.
And by waiting a few more days, we're waiting two more weeks, two more weeks.
We didn't say two more weeks.
Dr. Ball, if anyone asks you, what I wrote right here is almost exactly what you said. And, and, but let me say that. So, but what I would say is, the difference on mine was, what I was hoping to, that should the CDC be recommending, do what we expect they will do. That then you would have the authority to just automatically get the masking, everybody gets that, you know, without, without. So for me, it's either that, or it's allowing Dr. Ball to get her administrative team together and bring the culpability and have a conversation about those details, those algorithms. That's it. All we're saying is, if it's, if it's five percent, if it's ten percent in a building, that's when masks go back on. Making that decision here, because everyone is so eager for us to do it, it's not a lot of things to do. It's as much as I want to, I want, everybody wants to, I do. I, all along, we have deferred to our administrative team, everyone to do. You're, you're part of the team, and I am not willing to get so fat. And so that's why I would like a amendment and suggest that.
I'm in favor of that amendment, amendment of the amendment. Uh, it, to be very clear, what we're saying, is that in a situation that changes tomorrow, which the CDC can surprise us just for fun, and not change anything. And then it still follows Dr. Ball, which is terrible, because it's only ten percent, and then the rest of the, with you, of course, but you're willing to accept the responsibility. Uh, that, I think that's what we're saying, we're saying that in this, with clause, um, if the CDC issues new guidance, the school districts, the masks are no longer recommended. How about we, well, it is already, it's changing a word in, uh, something. Did you see new guidance, the school districts, the masks are no longer recommended, is it called a fire mask, do they continue, do they recommend them? As per, is the, is the whole thing, is the discretion in the description, is every single clause, is the discretion in the description? Okay, so we don't have to explicitly say, is the discretion of the administration, so this could be our clause, and the whole plan is with the discretion of the administration. This allows Dr. Ball to make changes and respond to guidance.
Can someone bring, like, the, 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 what they say?
There's one, there's one sentence in the plan, if the CDC issues new guidance, the school districts where masks are no longer recommended, the district will not require masks, but may continue to recommend them. That new guidance can be widely encompassing, it could change the way we're rated based on the number of cases, right? So anything that fires the physical might go down. It could change percentages, so right now, we shut down five percent of the buildings, it could change if you're shut down ten percent of the buildings. There's lots of things that the CDC might be touching tomorrow, but I think most importantly, it probably won't touch the way we're determined. Right now, our local transmission is determined to be high, and I think that is something that could change.
But that still requires masking, unless that changes.
No, no way, yeah.
If it drops, correct, but there, but there's still that variable in the spread, which I would still give back to the authority. We can say a percentage. I think that two weeks ago, we had said, we're going to remove contact tracing if one of the variables, the scientific study don't change everything. We removed one variable, we haven't seen the big spikes in the past two weeks, as we, we remove contact tracing. I would say, I, this is just a speculation here, but I would say that all of our administrative team have had two years to come up with a plan for what happens when we go to mask options. I would imagine that they probably have a plan ready to go. I, I hope that they do, but I don't want to put them on the spot, but I'm very comfortable allowing them to decide a threshold. And if we want to make that public, we can make it public Monday, we can come back and call emergency meetings and make those thresholds approved by the board. But I think that it's time to take some action this evening, I think it's time, regardless of what the CDC says tomorrow, it might change, it might not, and that's okay. But for two years now, we followed a lot of the recommendations, and we've turned some of them away, voted on the health and safety plan, and some of them we bought, and I'm okay with that. I voted yes to come back in person in the summer to that point, I voted yes for universal masking, to start designing. As we continue to evolve, I think our plan is to evolve, and it is. But if the CDC doesn't drastically change it, we're still in a position that we have to come back again in two more weeks to propose, what do we do with masks?
I, I think. Sorry, go ahead, Tara.
Sorry, um, I, I have to kind of agree with Corey tremendously, um, not to get too crazy personal, but I'm currently sitting in Philadelphia with my ten-year-old that has an issue that we thought was her foot. It's not her foot, it's her brain, tremendously due to stress. I'm not saying it's due to masking, I'm not going to pretend that it's due to masking, but these kids are under incredible amounts of, of stuff that we can't imagine. Um, just to try to go to school and get through the day, just to try to figure out things with teachers and other kids. Um, you know, I remember Jonah from the last meeting saying, he, he's dealing with kids that he's supposed to be having personal connections with, that he doesn't know what their face looks like. Um, right now, she's in and out of a hospital all day, they're masked, she doesn't know what her therapist look like. She's meeting with people that she does not know. I'm not with her. She's doing fine, she's doing amazing, but today, we sat not doing P T and O T all day, but with a therapist, a mental therapist. And when she comes home, it's not P T and O T that she needs, she needs a therapist. So I contend, we don't know what's going on with our kids right now. And I'm tired of hearing kids begging us to take the masks off, and I'm tired of hearing parents beg to take the masks off, and we're not listening. The kids that need to be masked, the families that need to be masked, please mask, get a proper fitting, N ninety-five mask and wear it. Protect yourself, protect your family, it's not difficult. My child masking or not masking does not make that child any more safe or any less safe if they have a properly fitting mask. So I would contend, let's use our time, energy, money, all those resources to have our school nurses know how to properly fit an N ninety-five mask for these kids and these families so that they can feel safe coming back to school as well. Let's take masking to the parents and the families to make that choice, and so that teachers can start teaching and not policing masks.
Up to see some of our resources, whether it's nurses going through training, whether it's Stephen and Dicey are sending representatives. Our healthcare workers go through, if they're doing, if they have to fit tests for their masks. Let's provide those resources to people who want them. Let's get some resources to properly have a fit test, if they smell or taste it, what they spread. I'm not in health care, so I don't know what, I just know that they go through these, they, I hear my, all my friends talk about the fit test. Let's provide these resources, let's step up what we're doing, and the resources that we can provide those families that are the most vulnerable. But again, in, I, in my mind, we need to consider more than just COVID, and I think that's time to move forward.
Okay, so here, the principal sitting in the front, I, I mean, perhaps valuable input.
I think we're going to wrap up this part of the discussion.
I, I would just make, if I can make a suggestion, uh, we currently in our plan, in the narrative from the beginning, we've spelled out when it would be required for schools to close, that would be, would be five percent positivity. One option or suggestion, we need to change that to going back to masks. If that, if that occurs, so five percent, and this is very similar to what we're, we're. And all of the, if one is positive for COVID, we, we still do ask that, if one's positive for COVID, that they would be masked on, on day six, or ten, and they return. So those protocols, it's a gameplays, um, and that's clearly what we're actually doing everywhere, protecting themselves, or stay home, stay home, that's what ten days, and that's what we're actually about to. So, um, you know, I just, with the principals, it's not typical for them to engage in that, but I, I feel comfortable speaking on behalf of them, that they're really, they really want to get back to what the regular jobs are with students. And looking at the students and to address some of these issues that have been brought up, you know, this is really what they want, they don't want to come over there.
I would, I would motion, although we're not going to, but I mean, the, the, um, but I think it might, could you know, maybe? I would motion to agree to change my bike to the T S, the, the push remote, to a bike that is included, you would switch to mask. And we need, we need somewhere in here that said, have the discretion to decide, so we have a sense of the administration's immediate expectation, or overall, we need to say, administration will have discretion to decide immediately. Because it actually isn't here right now, explicitly, that she has the decision in her mind, and they have authority to make that decision. I couldn't understand.
Yes, it's because the, the guidelines from the department head are, if we hit five percent positivity, I should be calling the department health. And the department's agency, we should post schools, I can tell you in the instance that other school districts have experienced this. It's kind of, well, what do you think we should do? They don't, they're not necessarily telling me to shut down schools. This year's much different than last year, last year, we only needed five cases when the high schools closed. So they're, what they're allowing for, to tolerate the amount of people that might have COVID or caught COVID, is much greater. And that's, I take that as a positive sign, for who we want to have this here. And as I shared before, if there's any truth to the COVID, um, court passed around, on CDC's website, our cases are going to continue precipitously drop. And we're getting to spring, we're getting to more outside activities, and all that will be helpful.
Everybody, are you feeling comfortable?
This, Dr. Ball, you, you got? Yeah. I, I am comfortable if there's a rabidating person at a particular school to be a bad guy, but if you need to, as I, yeah, my.
I, I'm not comfortable, I'm sorry, I know everyone in the two of them is comfortable, but I am not comfortable going against the CDC guidance. I am so hopeful that the CDC guidance is changing tomorrow. But as we've heard, there are people, well-informed, educated people on both sides of this issue. I see no choice but to defer to our governmental body that controls Z's in our country. Um, and until they say that masks are not necessary, I'm not comfortable making a different decision.
So do we defer for the mental health of our, of our schools?
Or we're still taking care of children, and we heard from kids here tonight, who, who, who have spoken very eloquently about an association with not masking and mental health. So to just put out there that there's a direct correlation between kids wearing masks and kids having anxiety, I'm sure that's true. But there is also a correlation between kids not experiencing a mask situation and having anxiety. So we can't, we all support mental health, and we are doing a lot as a district to support mental health, and we can do more and we should. But the conflation of that, with the mask, there's a lot of power. The Z's look at who are masks, I, I'm sorry, I, I hear you.
I know that you're taking further than ninety-five, like, the political, but I think that captures all of it. All right, go. We, we need to make this plan work, this is a plan that we can't, we have to have it in place, but you have to actually make sure that you're, get them coming. How about, tired of March one eighth? Uh, if you need for a decrease to low, moderate, or substantial, because I think we could get substantial, I'm going to try to make eye contact with someone in the audience. What is the number for our county, in the town hall?
Again?
All right, we're just having a man who's writing.
We're having trouble with the city people, we're talking, we need to knock you.
No, I can't hear, I can't hear what you're saying.
And they want to tell me, please, let them think, which is totally. And I just ask that everyone try to be patient and be quiet, so that we can have this conversation as efficiently as possible.
Okay. All right.
I, I just tried to get through the health and safety plan, please.
Yep, if the audience could please be quiet, thank you.
All right, all I'm saying is, we need words that work for the.
That's for.
I know, you can talk to the lawyers.
Yes, yeah, for the, yep.
We need words that make this plan work, to be able to account what we know, what we heard tonight, and the remains of this word discussing what's compromised at this point. But we do need to make this plan something we go to. So I'm suggesting that we can do a few things here. One, we have to give explicit authority to Dr. Ball, it's not explicit that she has authority to change. The other thing is, we can have low, moderate, substantial, or T B C R A, um, that would alleviate a lot, because we're very close to that point right now, can I understand, correct? Maybe? No.
Maybe a lot.
Uh, yeah. Then my, my only amendment is to say that we give explicit authority to Dr. Ball and change the five percent step positive, uh, schools, and five percent that's on it to mask.
And that's, sorry, so everybody, but in the understanding, that's with the making masks recommended, so you're still including that in which? With the five percent of going back to masking, that, that five percent threshold, I just want to be clear that what I'm voting on, so you're still proposing that, that we make it mask off, or masks, masks recommended?
I think that's the hundred and ten minutes.
Right, we might have to do that separately, because we probably still want to keep that, my, what, so you can go on, you can do that. What, how would you like to proceed, Virginia, in order?
Um, technically, uh, right now, Jordan's motion to make masking recommended as of, I believe you said, five P M tomorrow, is the current amendment being discussed? So you'll probably, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Make one more amendment to my, so Aaron's amendment, so. So five P M tomorrow, masks recommended with a five percent threshold, it's the same as what we're doing now, with closure of school. Uh, we go back to masking, but that doesn't, and that makes sense, because if we're hitting five percent, we're closing.
Which was my argument, that maybe it should be a little bit lower than that.
Three percent, four percent, I mean, we can, we can decide that.
But this is where we really need input to make that decision.
So I would then give the discretion to Dr. Ball to continue to reach out, people work with the administrative team, with a, with a threshold that we're approving tonight, with their, with a discretionary threshold, that we will go back to masking. that we're approving tonight with their, with a discretionary threshold, that we will go back to masking if a certain goal gets that threshold. I am very comfortable giving them that discretion. You guys might hate it, but I'm comfortable in your judgment to make that, that threshold make sense. And as you guys know your numbers, you guys are the ones who are monitoring, updating the COVID dashboard on my website. You guys know much better than I personally do as a board member. So I would give that discretion to come up with a threshold and give that to the board and what we.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we need to vote first on Jordan's original motion, which is to make masking optional at 5:00 PM. Sorry, make masking recommended at 5:00 PM tomorrow, which is February 25th. We're voting on just that.
With the, well, he has amended his motion to.
The administrative discretion over a threshold, which will be someplace less than 5%. And at that threshold, masking becomes, again, required. That, everybody's understanding. So that would be here as best for the, the rules coming out tomorrow on the 5:00. Well, I would say that the plan still includes language about be invited by the CDC guidelines. So the CDC guidelines should be even looser than that. We would follow the CDC.
Yes.
The most important aspect is. Had one initial, but there was a mistake. Is there any further discussion or report?
Could somebody please?
Okay. So that, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Jordan, your amendment is to make masking recommended effective tomorrow, Friday, February 25th at 5:00 PM, and to give the superintendent and the administration the discretion to set a threshold to impose a mask mandate if that threshold is exceeded. That is the only change to the plan as it currently stands.
Correct.
As far as the quarantine part and the having our mouth, do we need that explicitly in there? Or is that, is that included? Or if we're called to work over? That's just.
How is that impacted if the CDC doesn't do what we hope they're gonna do tomorrow?
And that's why I wanted, was it, to be a factor to that regard, because it's not that way in the plan of this.
Well, and that's, I believe that's what Mr. Fetter's amendment gives Dr. Bowe and the administration the authority to set that threshold.
Any other questions or discussion?
On the amendment.
Can I ask one question about? That, like, when, when someone reports a positive test to the school, it has to be a test through the Department of Health or a home test?
No, the home test as well.
We're still on this one.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, we, we accept flu tests as well as a PCR test.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's changed it, it's his own amendment.
I, I think that would be fine. I mean, we're, the way, I'm comfortable with it, because the way everything's tracking right now, I don't think it's a huge problem. What our team is going to have to do though is help we get that number. We need to get our nurses to clean their mask. Make the band number five, three, or those.
Sorry.
And, and still that mask is on hand, in any case, the child becomes symptomatic. If, you know, it's caused consistent COVID symptoms, then the student could be in the nurse's office and heading on for revision, like, we ask them to mask. In fact, the other students could be in that ward, whatever diseases that they're coming. And that's just a temporary thing to do.
Do you have the volume you like to mention that, Dr. Bowe?
Yes, so that's a federal mandate for all public conferences, and that sets the entire online control. I don't know whether or not that would be. The new, maybe it could be, but that is still.
David, thank you for looking at that. That, that's a mandate, so we can't, we can't really go beyond that. So, so thank you for the clarification, especially that, that, that busing, that's a federal mandate that we can't, we have no power to overturn the federal mandate. So that would still stay intact, that busing, any public transportation, really busing to school, will still require masks. And I'll also just say one more thing real quick, because before the vote, many people might leave after that. Thank you, thank you for the, for your, but I'm sure you see from all of us board members, and I think I can speak to the entire board, the past two years have not exactly been, yes, there's been a lot of immersion, a lot of passion, a lot of time that we've all spent. So thank you for being very respectful, even though we might get a disneeded discussion. We also like each other every day. And I would applaud the board for continuing to work through these very challenging times. So before we vote, and before, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be people who don't like the outcome, whatever the outcome might be. So I just wanted to express that to us, and we not to drag on the meeting. Thank you all for, from the second grader to the eighth graders to the high school students. It is tremendous to see students share. No offense to the parents, but kids are much more impressive than we think. Again, it just, we try to have some lighthearted conversation. I wanted to express my gratitude for the, and again, whether you agree with it or not, or our decisions. I really do appreciate the respect and the communication you have. So without all that trouble.
And further discussion? So we're voting on the.
Amendment, yes.
Ms. Haynos? Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabon? Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yeah.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unseker Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
No.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So as our, as, sorry, as our resident parliamentarian, the original motion now is the Health and Safety Plan as modified by Mr. Fetter's amendment that now makes masks recommended as of 5:00 PM tomorrow, February 25th, along with granting Dr. Bowe and the administration the discretion to set a threshold at which masks may be required in the future. All other parts of the Health and Safety Plan remain unchanged. We are now back to the original consideration of the Health and Safety Plan, which has been moved and seconded.
I need further discussion of the amended Health and Safety Plan.
John, thank you. I agree with you, except for two words, which is the future, because it could be that tomorrow, we'll hold magic pieces or something wild happening in the county, and then break a level, Dr. Bowe not issuing that. So that, again, feel discretion on the part of the administration.
Yes, absolutely.
And then a clarification, questions or discussions? And we will need another roll public.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jabonski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yeah.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unseker Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
No.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Hayno? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, if I didn't precise to allow people to just. We have a wonderful. We have.
Is the 2022 December?
So this is going to be April 17th and we also changed graduation date to higher date.
Hi.
Then next up is the high school baseball field for more than eight.
Yes, at the last meeting, we voted to award the contract to Columbia Excavating and we asked that you approve the contract. So that Virginia can sign it tonight and I can meet with them tomorrow morning at 9am and they can dig out from under the snow and start moving earth over by the baseball field. Yes.
Okay, we're all public. Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter? Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
And then on to new business, the PDE PlanCon first day submission.
Yes, I would ask that you approve this this evening. We have put all the numbers in the right boxes on the spreadsheet. The auditors have looked at it. They have blessed our numbers. They're very familiar with them. This is the final step. Y'all vote on it. I submit it to PDE and we get a skosh more money in our PlanCon reimbursement.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton? Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter? Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski? Motion, Karen.
And then the memorandum of understanding. You said Dr. Jablonski? Second to final sentence, second. I would just like to commend everyone for figuring out how to do this. It's a wonderful opportunity for faculty and people. There's no other discussion than we'll probably.
Ms. Lyons?
Yeah.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yeah.
Mr. Heath?
I apologize, but I don't know what we're voting on because there was noise.
We're voting on the memorandum of understanding without AEA.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you. And we have a policy sport first meeting. If he wants to. Dr. Jablonski? Second to Ms. Stanton? Need to say anything about any of these policies? We're putting the cap away. All right.
It's policy.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yeah.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yeah.
Ms. Lyons?
Yeah.
Motion, Karen.
And that brings us to new business and first up is purchase of a robot.
Yes. So you have in front of you the brochure for the field line painting robot that has been brought to us by the maintenance department. And the reason for this request is that we are going into the spring season and in spring and fall, in addition to keeping our fields mowed, when you mow them, you have to reline them because the paint gets cut off. So what we are asking for is the investment and we would bring this to you at a future meeting if the board is amenable to purchase this robot that has a set it and forget it capability. That would take the field lining responsibilities off the plate of our maintenance guys who, by the way, we're still trying to hire our third maintenance guy. We're down to two. And they would be able to set it, forget it, walk away, go take care of other maintenancey things while the robot is painting on the field. The other benefit is that the robot is much more efficient at using field lining paint and would only use about 10% of what a manual field liner uses in terms of paint. So there's some cost savings there as well. Yes, it's basically a field Roomba or an iRobot. Yes, absolutely. Now, there were questions of security regarding this robot because you don't want to, you know, turn it loose on a field, turn your back on it and some kids come up to it and, you know, maybe mess with it. We did reach out to technical support. If you turn on the robot anywhere in the world, they can see where it is online from their online technical service center that they use to diagnose problems with the robot. So they will find that robot. And then the, as for say, a student decides they're going to hack into the robot. Everything is secure with a password. So unless you're a world-class hacker, you are, you probably won't be able to break into the tablet or the computer system. The robots talk to the tablet via an encrypted cellular network or encrypted Bluetooth. There are thousands of these robots across the world right now and they have not had any issues with security. So they. Again, you. Yeah, no, I understand. You would have to hack into the encrypted cellular network in order to reprogram it. Yes. Yeah, I know. And that's, and that's why we asked the question. So yes, there are thousands of these robots all across the United States and the world. They have not had security issues. They have not been up against Lewisburg students, but I think, I think we'll be okay. So.
John?
Yes, Corey.
I know we used one of these things last year. What's the, how did we pay for it last year?
Last year, we rented one. So we rented it from the company and so it was a one-time fee. And basically what we did was we rented the robot that created the template on the field and then our guys went over and over and over again to reline the field. In this case, we would have our own robot that would go over and over and over again. And I, that is a great question. I will have to ask what the warranty is. I did not see it in the brochure, but I'm sure there is one. I will find out.
Can we get one that mows too? Because we have more issues with that than we do lines.
Aaron says no mowing. I'm sorry, Corey.
Robots that'll plow snow now. How about that?
That we will look into as well. So yes, if the board is amenable, I'll find out about the warranty and bring it back to you at the next meeting. So thank you for your consideration.
All right, thanks, John. I'm sorry, Corey.
I was just going to say if we don't mow some of the fields, it'll be like Children of the Corn or something.
Okay, next is the board president's report and I'll just very quickly say that I've been going to the SBA, I don't remember what the house, it's like a series of four sessions on board leadership and it's been really interesting to, and sort of who did some of these rights and meet with leaders across the state. Get some good advice and sort of related to that, Dr. Vaughn and I started talking about trying to find a time for our retreat. It was difficult to find a time that works for everybody and I know that we won't have to go the next for a while. So, but later in the spring, and we already did something on our calendar soon. We'll find a time to do, I was really talking about what that will look like, what we want out of that. That's all I have to say. And that brings us happy to your assistant superintendent.
Well, mine's right there at your place and you don't need me to read it to you. It's bulleted to make it very simple. I will point out it's two broad areas. I did bring you ironically, as it's been much admired tonight, I wanted you to see some of the steps we're taking to address mental health issues in the district. And so I invite you to take a look at that and I'd be happy to answer any follow-up questions or anything. And again, the curriculum work is always ongoing, so I made a few brief bulleted comments to that effect. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Board liaison and committee, please. Does anybody have anything to share?
I'm using that last week. We have to report in front of you. I was gonna ask.
Yes.
It's a really cool thing that sort of illustrates all of the options and opportunities that I take within IU and I would love for people to see it here.
Some document last week and you have it in front of you. The biggest thing that I would highlight is Director Jane, Jen, right? Did, we did approve her retirement subtext, so.
Oh, wow.
A huge, just some personal stuff that she is looking forward to retirement. And just a huge shout out to Jen and everything she's done in Sub-Tech. She will greatly be missed. Start the process of replacing, but just a shout out to Jen and just to draw that to everybody's attention. And also, again, I know we're kind of late here, but Jamie went over and did a little walkthrough. I'll send it to the whole board, but the new board members, I mean, even some current board members who haven't been over a while looks different than at least when I did my walkthrough and things will be changing. So I would definitely encourage you guys to decide on time to meet with Jen and go walk through.
I think we actually did something for the board members when we went as a group.
Yeah. Is the restaurant still, is it operational now?
Something there because they just got that new, like a hotbar or whatever. I think that's what we were, I'm sorry, that it's in the record.
And maybe we could have a first time to. Jordan, was there any, do you know anything about the other districts and the budget?
So more than five districts approved. I'm not sure which district it's not, but it wasn't.
And she's leaving again.
Yes, I believe so.
Also, I mentioned that one of our Lewisburg students over there, Natalie, she was on the private here, she was my open, but she's been on the program. But she was the Lewisburg summer, you know, the month of February and she also got second place for climbing.
For any other board liaison? Hey, Ben, sorry that y'all wouldn't see that.
Yeah, it is a holiday that's very long indeed. And I agree, you've got a solid bike call.
Yeah.
Okay, then I, that brings us to the consent agenda. My local motion to.
Kathy.
And there is.
Yes, it, yes, it is. Yes, yes. So now instead of using styrofoam trays, we're using compostable trays at Kelly for the kids who can't be in the cafeteria with the regular plastic trays.
We need to like, whenever they come back like, because that's a lot, there's a lot of talk about that in the community. So that should be like screened from the map.
Yes.
I have to remember to put that in the CSU update because I get a link to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Put it there, put it on, put it everywhere. That has been talked about for, especially this year with styrofoam. That has been talked about a lot.
I have a quick question. I have a quick question about the CSIU behind the wheel. Just more of a clarification. Have we always paid for that for our students?
You know what, Tara? I don't know the answer for that because I thought that was an individual part that I can find out and get that for everybody.
Because I, I mean, as far as I know, as early as a year ago, or as long as a year ago, we did not because I paid for my kids. So I just saw that that was on the consent agenda and I thought it was interesting. Because usually we cover, I mean, the school, obviously we have the class for the instruction part, but the behind the wheels usually up to the parents in past.
I will ask the question and get that better. I believe this is just to the view of partnership with the CSIU to provide the necessary parent expense. Because we're recommending the CSIU and they are opposed to it, we need to approve it. So we're sanctioning this instead of Joe's driving school.
So we're not agreeing to pay for the instruction?
Read, unless I, unless I read it completely wrong. Where is it?
It says that constitutes an agreement that the CSIU will conduct the behind-wheel instruction administrative test to students with the oversight by the district.
But there's money, doesn't it talk about money?
No.
I don't know what I read then today. Sorry.
If you go out front in our bus pull-through loop, there is a perfectly painted exact size of the parallel parking space. We had to agree in the original agreement to paint it precisely located and allow CSIUs hired driving instructor to come and perform that part of the test onsite here at that designated spot. As part of the fact that you can now take a cash driver's test with an instructor versus somebody as old as Mo from when you were state police driving, of course, a long time ago. It's just an agreement that that's what we put out here and allow Lewisburg students to be tested that way.
And that we're approving those three instructors to be able to instruct our students.
So they do the hiring. They are their certified driver education test administrators. Our is the in-school class 35-hour theory that we continue to offer here.
I apologize. I must have read something completely wrong on the money part. So I'm glad I asked.
We may have to have the robot repaint the.
It can do that. It can totally repaint our parking lots too.
Paint it.
No, thanks for the question, Sarah. I think it's a hundred percent consent agenda to fully release, though.
There is, there is a little money there that she read about. They made charges.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Jordan.
Never mind.
Okay, are we ready to vote then on the consent agenda? Or we'll call both, please, Paul.
Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yeah.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski? Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yeah.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Motion, Karen.
Director's comment? I think we've only people out as we hear, and then we will have partners there. And maybe some.
Yeah, I mean, I would love. But it would be great to have people so involved in so many things. And as Jordan mentioned, I do think there are a lot of issues that were pre-poped. And taking off the mats is not going to make them go away. And we need to really focus our attention towards that. From staff morale to mental students or what's going on with the special ed program. There's just a lot of focus that needs to go to other.
Tara?
I just appreciate the conversation tonight. I know that it took a lot of people out of their comfort zone on both sides and I appreciate that we can come together as a board and make a decision and support each other and support the administration. And we've done it in the past where there's been disagreement and we've moved forward and we get through it and that's what we do. And I agree with Kristen. I mean, it's time to focus on what's important, what's always been important, but really what's important now is getting the schools more cohesive, more in touch with each other and get back to teaching and learning and getting the kids healthy in all aspects, so.
Thanks, Tara. Corey?
I don't have anything other than to say it's not snowing here.
Not right here. We don't know what it's doing here. We haven't been outside.
Yeah. That is a very tough one. I want everyone to know the device has been vocal on one side of the issue for a long time. I'm not on either side of the issue at all. We have a lot of information that comes to us through emails, people calling us, speaking with experts that we know. And it's not a easy decision at all. I want to give a lot of the expertise for taking to the vast amount of it. Everyone's in a good place. And if I didn't have a particular meeting Monday or Tuesday, I don't think I'd go to this event. So things are changing now.
I would just want to thank the board for their continued support of this. I don't think that's going to be sooner than later. I really felt like this would always cause terrible damage. Last year, I think we're going to be.
Nothing to add.
To our administrators, who many left, but Jen, Kathy, all central office, all of the other schools. I hope it wasn't taken tonight that I'm just pushing it on you guys. I hope it, I hope I relay the trust that I have in you guys. And like I said, I apologize for maybe you don't do under the bus and I'm not trying to do that, but I hope you guys understand the trust that I have in our administrators. It makes me call this description. I wholeheartedly believe that, you know, it might be a tough call, but you guys can do it. So I hope you, I hope you realize that trust that I have in you guys. It wasn't coming from me just shutting off.
I'll just say that I feel the thoughts shared by others that I do appreciate hearing from so many members of the public in person, but also the folks who contact us online or by email. And I appreciate that, you know, this has been really hard time to be on this board. It's a really hard conversation. And I think we're doing pretty well, you know, in group. I think that despite how challenging this is and despite that really is not at all fun. I, you know, I think we're finding ways to work, do the best we can. I share the sentiments that I have for.
But I, you know, I think we're finding ways to work, we're just trying to do the best we can. I share the sentiments that I report very much to turn into other things. But also because it's my thing, I have to get a show after we across America, a whole day that's all about reading and this week and celebration of books and kids are reminded that they want to read, they haven't found a special book yet. Maybe they find it on Wednesday next week. It's so. We're happy about that.
And that brings us to comments to the board on non-agenda A D.
We have one additional comment online. From David Zelikowski. He writes, the cases are dropping. Praise the Lord. In fact, EVAN just announced the testing center on St. Mary's Street will be closing tomorrow because the numbers are down. Testing will be done at doctors offices now instead. Let's keep in mind, this is a disease of the elderly and the compromised. Even Dr. Fauci admits mask play a limited role in all this and a noted CDC official implied cloth masks are nothing more than window dressing. What we are debating here, someone earlier said, let's not make this political. Exactly. She said other things, but I couldn't hear a lot of it, probably because she was wearing a mask. Thank you.
I really appreciate all the time you guys have given to everybody. I have lots of people as well to admire the provision before that. I'm also really, really eager for you all to be on the other things. Especially for special ed. Thank you for taking all the time that you did take. If you have any questions, I'm really excited to hear you guys.
And then I'll take a motion to adjourn from the.
Jablonski, Fetter.